Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call the July 24th, 2008 Planning Commission meeting to order. I'd like to read the open meeting law compliance. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open meeting law. We are live on KCLV Channel 2, and this meeting will be rebroadcast Saturday at 10:00 a.m., the following Monday at midnight, Tuesday at 5:00 a.m., and Thursday at 6:00 p.m. Would everybody please stand for the pledge?
(inaudible)
Chair Goings.
Present.
Vice Chair Throwbridge.
Present.
Commissioner Truistale.
Present.
Commissioner Evans.
Present.
Commissioner Steinman.
Present.
Commissioner Denham.
Here.
Commissioner Quinn.
Here.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'd like to call your attention to the information printed in your agenda concerning our actions and the appeal and review process. If appropriate, please read this material carefully, and if you have any questions, staff is available. Also, the second page of the agenda contains our rules of conduct. We'd appreciate you adhering to these rules so we can have a smooth meeting. Thank you. At this time, the Chair will entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes from the June 26th Planning Commission meeting.
So moved.
Motion on the floor, please cast your vote. That motion has passed. Let's move on to our housekeeping items. Are there any items that Commissioner's staff, applicants, or members of the public would like to pull forward for action?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Item number 14, SUP 28274, applicant has requested this item be stricken. Item number 43, Varian's VAR 28497, applicant has requested that this item be held in abeyance until the 8/14 Planning Commission. Item 44, SUP 28496, has also been requested to be held in abeyance until the 8/14 Planning Commission meeting. And item 45, SDR 28498, has also been requested to be held in abeyance until the 8/14 Planning Commission meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. May I have a motion on the abeyance withdrawal request items is read into the record?
Motion to approve is recommended.
Motion on the floor for approval, please cast your votes. And that motion has passed. There are no consent items. Moving on to the one motion, one vote items, those would be Items 6 through 8. The following items that may be considered in one motion, one vote, they are considered routine, non-public and public hearing items. All public hearing and non-public hearing items will be opened at one time. Any person representing an application, or a member of the public, or a member of the Planning Commission not in agreement with the conditions, and all standard conditions for the application recommended by staff, should request to have that item removed from this part of the agenda. I'll read the items in. Item 6, SUP 28382, applicant Walmart Stores Inc., owner Pan Pacific Development Inc., for a 130,942 square foot retail establishment with accessory packaged liquor, off sale at 3041 North Rainbow Boulevard. Item 7, SUP 28534, applicant owner Vitale Claco, for an existing 514 square foot accessory structure, Class 1, with a kitchen at 820 Trotter Circle. Item 8, SDR 28536, applicant Trevy Manufacturing, owner 2701 Westwood LLC, for a minor amendment to an approved site development plan, Z0062-60-1, to allow for parking lot modifications at 2701 Westwood. These are one motion, one vote, they're public hearing items, public hearing is open. Seeing none, we'll close. I'll entertain a motion on one motion, one vote, Items 6 through 8.
Make the motion to approve Items 6, 7, and 8, so we tell staff conditions.
Motion on the floor for approval, please cast your vote. And that motion has passed.
Items 6 and 7 go on to council on August 20th, and Item 8 is final action in the absence of an appeal to the office of the City Clerk within 10 days.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to our public hearing items, beginning with Item number 9, GPA 25625, applicant City of Las Vegas, owner USA, from PCD Plan Community Development to PF Public Facilities at the southwest corner of Ann Road and the 215 Beltway. Item 10, ZON 25626, from U undeveloped PC Plan Community Develop, general plan designation to C-C-V Civic. Okay? Staff?
Mr. Chairman, Members of the Commission, Tom Perrigo, Planning and Development Department. This is a 131.7 acre site at the southwest corner of Ann Road in Clark County, 215. The current general plan is Plan Community Development, and the zoning is U undeveloped. What we're proposing is changing the general plan designation to Public Facility, and the zoning to Civic. As you can see, can I get the overhead, please? Thank you. The pen shows the site that we're looking at, again, at the corner of roughly Ann Road and 215, and that area west of the Beltway is predominantly PCD. We're proposing changing it to Public Facility. Again, this picture shows that we're changing the color on the map from that tan color to the sort of green color, to change it to Public Facility. The only question today is whether or not this site is appropriate for Public Facility, land use designation, and civic zoning. There is no specific use that is before you today at all. Any future legal entitlements to build on this property, whether it's the city or any other public agency, would require that proposal to go through a full public hearing before this commission and City Council to get an approved site plan. So just very briefly, I wanted to give you a little bit of history, how we got here. At the time we started this process, it was a time of rapid growth, right at the height of the boom, and there was tremendous pressure on development in this area. Providence was building out at a rapid pace, projected over 20,000 people. Kyle Canyon was in the process of being entitled, with a projection that would be under development soon, over 40,000 people. Town Center is developing. There is a recognition amongst some agencies that there is going to be a need, there was an immediate need, for land for public facilities to service this area. Specifically, Republic Services was looking for a site for a waste transfer station. Detention Enforcement was looking for a site, potentially for a booking facility, so that they could book people who were arrested for misdemeanors in the area, rather than having to come downtown to book them and take the officers off the street for up to three hours at a time. There was also identified a need for a City of Las Vegas service yard, and the school district has a tremendous need for bus, someplace to park and service buses to service this area. Since that time, obviously, the growth pressure has eased somewhat. Republic Services has pulled out, they have decided they don't, they are not interested in pursuing this site. Detention Enforcement will not be putting in a booking facility out here. So the only city uses right now that are being considered for the future are a service yard, and potentially, a training facility and admin offices for detention enforcement. Any kind of that, those proposals, though, are probably a minimum of five years or more away from anything being, any details coming forward for consideration for development. And the school district is still interested, is still looking for a site for their bus yard, although they have not made application to the city to put something on this site at this time. So although the growth pressure has eased, we think it is prudent to go forward with this item, to set this land aside for future public facility needs. The site has good freeway access, so that any public facility uses out there in the future would access the 215 and keep traffic out of neighborhoods. There is a limited amount of BLM land available, particularly BLM land of this size, in the northwest area, to cite for public facilities. It is adjacent to an existing industrial use, the community pit area, which will be in operation for at least another 20 years, probably longer. In the master plan, public building element, the policy of the city as adopted by the City Council, is to pursue these kinds of opportunities to set aside BLM land for future public facilities, so that when the need arises in the future, we're not out there trying to purchase the land at a great expense of the city. And it also asks us to look to co-locate with other agencies to reduce the cost of developing these kinds of facilities. In addition, the projected growth for the Centennial Hills area, currently population's around 140,000. Over the next 20 years, it's projected that another 200,000 people will be calling Centennial Hills home. So with all that extra growth, and the location, and all the other reasons, staff is recommending that we approve, that you approve this application. Now, I would like to, just briefly, if I might, Chairman.
Yes, sir.
There's a very complicated factor with this site, and that is the process for obtaining the lease through the BLM. Currently, there are two leases that have been applied for on this site. Where the pen is pointing to is sort of a little bit the northern kind of fingers that come off of the main area. There was an application made to BLM for a potential park on this site. Neither of these applications have been processed all the way through. They've just been, the application's been made, the city actually does the processing itself, and we're not advancing these leases at this time. But this lease has been applied for. Now, when the city goes to apply for a lease on BLM land, we go through a process, and part of that process is to submit a plan of development. That plan of development is very conceptual. It just gives the BLM something to go by when they go through the process of the environmental assessment, the EIS, and the NOR, the Notice of Realty Action, so they can base their decision on providing the lease to the city. So the plan of development is provided to the BLM. It is not in any way a legal entitlement for anybody to build anything there, but it's just part of the process, and it's kind of separate from the entitlement process we go through to do the GP, the rezone, and the site plan. But it's a necessary step in order to secure the land. On the southern portion of the site, there is a lease that was applied for. There is not a plan of development as part of that lease yet. There was just a description of the kinds of uses that we thought we would need at that time. That is not being processed until we sort out what kind of a conceptual plan would make sense, given that we don't know for sure what kind of facility we'll put there. So at this time, all we know for sure is that we will need land for public facilities in the future. So that's sort of where we are with the BLM process. It does get a little complicated, because as those plans of development work their way through the process, they go through what's called a Notice of Realty Action. At that time, that's publicly noticed to the community, to everybody within 750 feet, plus it's noticed in the newspaper for three weeks. But again, that's not the same, obviously, as a site plan that goes through this process. So with that, again, staff would like to recommend approval, and be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation. Now, this is a public hearing. If there's anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this item, please feel free to come forward. Can I see by a show of hands how many folks are anticipating speaking on this item? Okay. Let's make sure you come on down. We have two microphones. I'm gonna have the clerk set the clock to three minutes. As you heard in Mr. Perrigo's presentation, please keep in mind that this is not about, this is about the zoning and the GPA. Again, he mentioned this may be five years out. The Planning Department and staff are looking 40 to 50 years out, and so it's kind of like pre-planning. So let's stick to the germane fact of what the request is from the applicant, and not so much on what the uses are gonna be on there, because in reading through the information, you'll have ample opportunities to participate. I think there's a neighborhood association that's been formed because of this, and everything will be routed through them first, so you'll have ample opportunity. Yes, ma'am?
Good evening. My name is Denise Aaron-Simia. I reside at 5265 North Chieftain Street, Las Vegas, Nevada, 89149. My home is approximately right here, where this little dot is, and the circle around here is exactly where the proposed site is, and where notice notifications went out for this proposal. As you can see, and I'm not sure if you can see in that picture, but I have another one, the amount of people that were notified initially of this proposal, cards that were sent out were 38 cards. Five responses came back. There are exactly 16 houses that are in this vicinity, who could have been, the actual houses that people are living in, that could have been notified. My home is right here. I was not notified, obviously, because I am not within that 1,000 feet. So I didn't find out about this until it got to the stage that we're in right now. This house, right here, was notified. Obviously, this does not affect him on a personal level, because he's either a land owner. We're talking about people who are affected by this in their neighborhood. Five years out, we're not, we're not in agreement with rezoning this property for the unknown. We would like to know exactly what will be in our backyard. These are all, and I hate to say this like this, but these are all multimillion dollar houses, or such. And when you say that it doesn't affect very many people, well, if you look around, there's lots of houses that it does affect. I do have things to say, but it's gonna run over my three minutes, so I will let everybody else do what they have to do, and I just want to say that I am totally in disagreement with any kind of rezoning at this time, unless we know what the rezoning is for. I don't agree with the county, citizens, and the city, inter-local agreement, coming together and making everybody sing kumbaya together. I just don't think that is always the point, and that always is the case. And I would like to know, before a decision is made, that we have an idea of what's gonna go there, because our group was instrumental in having the trash transfer facility removed from the site.
What's your group?
Citizens of the Northwest.
Gotcha.
And we were instrumental. We did a lot of research. We went out to the dump sites and did a lot of footage, held a meeting at the Santa Fe, and we had 400 to 500 people in attendance that night. At that time, Commissioner Brown had determined that it was gonna be slated, it was gonna be removed off the docket.
They were all singing kumbaya?
They were, they were. Okay, I'm beeping. I'm from New York, so I beep a lot. Okay, I'll let Les Williams, who is my protege, continue on. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Thank you. If anybody else would like to speak, please come on down and form a line. There are two microphones, so come on down at this time.
Can you get my house in here?
Yes, sir.
Good evening, folks. My name is Leland Williams, and I do represent Citizens of the Northwest. We were the group that was instrumental in getting some rethinking done on the garbage. I reside at the corner of Ann Road and 215. That's my home we're talking about. I walk across the street to the parcel of land that you were talking about here this evening. So it's not something that's happening in New York City. This is my backyard. And I would agree with you. We were singing kumbaya that night, and we certainly feel better about things now that Robert Coyle, who's the CEO of Republic Services, was kind enough to have breakfast with myself and Denise a couple of days after that meeting, and we were very comforted by the things he had to say to us. Margaret Wheeler was kind enough to meet with us, and we appreciate that. Thank you very much. We think this needs a lot more thought, and we don't really understand why the city is as anxious as they are to move this forward at this point in time. Respectfully pointing out, there's some elections coming up in the fall, where various members of our local government are running for various offices, and it just seems to me we should slow it down, and give us, the citizens who live here, an opportunity to talk to you. Okay? And I really respect the opportunity to be here tonight, but we have grave concerns. The school district was nice enough to meet with us last week, and we listened to their concerns about, and their needs. We're not convinced that this site is the only site that's appropriate, but we do understand the needs of the school district, okay, to reslate some of their busing. Okay? And that came across in a very positive way to us. We just want to slow this process down, and make sure that we're doing the right thing for everybody involved. The only other comment, in terms of a civic organization, that's us. So please do make sure that we, the citizens of the Northwest, are involved in the decision process as it moves forward. Thank you for your time, Mr. Stevens.
Thank you very much, Mr. Williams.
Good evening. Don McIntyre is my name. Galileo Drive, Las Vegas, 89149. Seems like we all have some type of map. I don't know exactly where to position this. I have another one of much smaller detail.
Just put them right, see the white lines right there? Put it right in the middle. Oh, just put it right on, there you go.
Here we go. How about that?
Perfect.
Okay. I live more than 750 feet away from the area in question, so I was not notified initially also. But since that time, I find that the review processes, you have a very, very complicated, complex. You'll see on what I have put down, it indicates light industrial parking for 600 school buses. I've been trying to find out, how many school buses does Clark County School System have? And they want to put 600 in that particular area?
Excuse me, sir. The school buses, over here to you.
Oh, okay.
The school buses is not on the agenda tonight. Trash is not on the agenda. School buses are not on the agenda tonight.
Then let me make the comment a little differently, that this information I was given in April, and now we've come to, if you will, the final decision as to what you're going to vote on. Everything that has proceeded has been very confusing to we, the citizens. What you may do, could do, and then it all gets taken off. Why not tell us completely what it is you want to do, when you want to do it, and how you want to do it, and then we can make a decision, instead of just doing it piecemeal?
Well, I think Mr. Perrigo just laid out what they want to do. What the request is, is to amend the master plan. They want to take it from Plan Community Development to Public Facility. That's the first request. The second request is to change the zoning from Plan Community Development to Civic.
Correct.
Okay? So that's the first request. That's what we're up here to talk about tonight.
I understand that.
If that be approved tonight, then it will go on to its next phase, which will, Mr. Perrigo, if you can jump in here at the--
And the next phase would be what would be put on the Civic if it was passed, correct?
That's correct. But it will all have to come forward for public meeting and public input on what's gonna be there, so--
But the decision--
And approval.
My concern is the decision of what goes on that Civic-zoned area is made after it's zoned. Why not tell us what could, would go on that piece of property before it is zoned Civic?
Because they don't know. What they're doing is they're trying to think out in the future. I know they know it's gonna, it needs to be public facility, because there will be a need for these services out in the future. What I looked at is they said that future could go out as far as 40 to 50 years. So we don't know, but it will be a discussion. But tonight, what we're here to talk about is the GPA and the zoning, and if that is proper for this piece of property at this time.
Well, I would suggest that you wait and find out what it is you need, where you need it, and then decide if you want to have this piece of property zoned Civic.
Okay. So that tells me, are you for or against?
I'm against.
You're against.
I'm against.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Richard Christie. I reside about 5 tenths of a mile away from this project, to the east at 5850 Boulderbrook Court, Las Vegas, Nevada, 89149. My main point to make is I am opposed to the rezoning change at this time. It's all well and fine to say that there's not a garbage dump being discussed now, there's not a school bus parking lot being discussed now. This is clearly a first step in a process that could lead to that type of development, or something entirely different. We just heard tonight, in fact, myself for the first time, that a park was thrown out there as a possible use for a portion of this property. Bottom line is, there's not a compelling, immediate, or near-term future use for this property, and to proceed with a zoning change with just a wish list, like a kid has at Christmas time, for various things he might want a year later, is, in my opinion, imprudent. Another point I'd like to make is the notification area, as Denise was alluding to earlier, really doesn't represent the nature of the community around this project. If you look at the west side of 215, it's either vacant, or the gravel pit that people have been referring to, and on the east side of the highway, of the Beltway, there are numerous homes at a density of no greater than one home per half acre. They are indeed very valuable homes, in my opinion, but it's also a lifestyle that people sought out to live there, to have space between their neighbors, perhaps some horses. It's a very semi-rural lifestyle, is how it's described. So if you drew an even circle out to, say, a two or three mile radius, all the residents are to the east of this property, and I firmly believe they would all be affected by a future heavy commercial use of some sort. And we certainly don't want a jail, we don't want a garbage dump. A lot of commercial traffic from something as benign as school buses would be undesirable. I personally have witnessed the aftermath of two fatal accidents within approximately 5 tenths of a mile, actually, one right at the intersection of Ann Road and the 215, associated with gravel trucks, in the eight years I've lived in the area. And I can only imagine the impact of buses and garbage trucks, maybe police vehicles bringing prisoners into jail. So at this time, I think the plan for the property has not been sufficiently spelled out.
Excuse me, let me clarify something real quick. No one here has said we're putting a jail, we're transporting prisoners by bus. Comments that tend to exaggerate the potential doesn't reflect what is before us tonight. And I only say this because I found that comment to be inciting, more so than truthful, and that's really a concern. What is before us is fairly straightforward, and I will let you finish your remarks.
Yes, I understand.
But there isn't some creative agenda here. This is a master planning process that is what most neighborhoods expect us to do throughout the city of Las Vegas, and we're doing this. This isn't something that's happened very quickly. This application was made back, as I look at the date of the--
January.
Sometime in November. So this isn't, there isn't some grand plan here to put something in the neighborhood without getting everybody's involvement. And I, sorry, I just did not want to hear that we're, there's a jail, we're not putting an Air Force Base here, we're not, we're not doing things that are inconsistent with the city's master planning process. So go ahead and finish your remarks.
Well, with respect to your clarification, there's our uses that have been mentioned in various planning documents and meetings, and I realize they're not specified here tonight, but they're clearly things that have been considered, and as mentioned, the Republic Facility and the processing facility for prisoners have backed off in their likelihood in the near future, mainly due to comments and public protest, I firmly believe. So this is the beginning of something for the future. If a condo developer asks for rezoning on a particular piece of property, it's not because he doesn't know what he wants to do in the future, he wants to build condos there. And I believe there's a use envisioned, and this is the first step of the process, and I'm vehemently opposed to it.
Thank you.
Let me jump in here real quick and explain something. I just confirmed this with the city attorney. This is land owned by the BLM. What we are trying to do is get control of it as the city of Las Vegas. There's other people in line that could get control of this, namely, the Clark County School District. In order for the city of Las Vegas to get control of this land, we have to zone it. Once we get it zoned, this public facilities, we got it. Everything that has to happen, you folks get a chance to take a look at, because there will be site plans, there will be design reviews, there will be all kinds of public hearing notifications, public hearings, public input, namely, the, I'm sorry, Denise, what was the group that you're heading, whatever the group is that you're heading up?
Citizens of the Northwest.
I represent this area. Councilman Ross represents this area. So you guys will be notified. But if we don't get control of this area, it could, one, go into private, the BLM could put it up for auction. Then, one, if the city of Las Vegas wants it, we either have to buy it, which you folks are going to pay for, or, two, we lose control of it.
Sir, may I ask a question?
So, we're just trying to get control of this property, and this is the first step in many that we have to go through so that the city of Las Vegas can control this property.
Sir, are you saying that in order to control--
Excuse me, sir.
Sir, I apologize.
Hold on, I'm going to make his comment, and then I'm going to turn it back over to you, but you need to begin with your name and address on the record.
Yes, sir, I apologize.
Mr. Dunham, are you finished?
Yeah.
Okay. Name and address for the record?
Good evening, Chairman Goins. My name is Lieutenant Colonel Bill Tracy. I live at 6103 Rocket Man Circle, 89149. I do respect and honor the dilemma before this commission today, balancing the needs of the city against the needs of its residents and the people that are before you today. I only personally represent people like myself who bought their homes for the reasons that they did. I bought my home in 2004 at the height of the boom, and when I did, I did the research on the areas around the home and the zones involved so that I would know where I was going, where I was going to live. Where I wanted to live is in a relatively rural area, not necessarily rural, but away from the hustle and bustle of the major city, a nice neighborhood with nice homes and good people. And that's what I accomplished by purchasing my home at 6103 Rocket Man Circle. The zoning I'm opposed to because it changes the character of my neighborhood. And I'm not necessarily certain that by controlling the land, you necessarily have to zone it as public facilities. You could zone it otherwise and still take control of it for the city. So all I'm asking tonight, sir, is that when you do cast your vote, that you weigh the balance of the greater good for the city and public facilities and the needs of the people who are before you in this room tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hello, Don Felsky. I live at 5845 North Conquistador, approximately a mile and a half from this location. Over the course of the last few years, Chip Maxfield, I think, has taught a number of us who live out there that negotiation and compromise is a way to get results within your community. And unfortunately, I have to oppose this project because there appears to be no room for compromise or negotiations. You have made mentions earlier on about us, you know, we mentioned what we think we've seen, and, you know, and you think it inflames everybody, but unfortunately, it was Commissioner Ross that actually had the community fair, and it was the Las Vegas Planning Department that actually put up the diagram and showed all these various entities that people are mentioning here. They had them actually defined and on a Las Vegas, City of Las Vegas drawing. So, as a community, it stimulates us when we see that, and probably not in a very positive way. So we don't come here with these ideas that they were something that they, they were self-created, they were fed to us by your own staff, and therefore then we're responding back to them. Okay? And it just, this just doesn't seem to be, at this point in time, an adequate fit for the master plan, and it looks to be pie-in-the-sky zoning, unfortunately. So I would appeal to you folks to oppose it at this point in time. Thank you.
Thank you. Just wanted to make correction, that Mr. Ross is a councilman, not a commissioner.
Counsel-- oh, excuse me.
So I just wanted to clarify that for the record. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, he's watching tonight.
Good evening. My name is Duane Libby, 6640, North Durango, 89149. I bought out there for the similar reasons to which have been stated by these other people, the rural area. I also happen to own some property of Brown Cheyenne and Comrus, so I'm very familiar of the potential uses of a public thing, such as the facility as a waste management and also that bus yard that had been proposed. I understand that's not before us now. But one who has property in that area knows of the stench in the busy area that is created by all those buses at that location. Consequently, I'm opposed to this because without restrictions placed on the zone change, we could be faced that in an area that is totally inappropriate for that use. Consequently, I would say if you're going to go ahead and promote or approve this change, that you also put a restrictive covenant as far as the usage of that land. And I think that's totally appropriate. You could make it so that you could obtain your property that you wish to obtain, yet protect some of the citizens out there from uses that are not appropriate. And therefore, I'm opposed without those restrictive covenants. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Libby.
Evening, Commissioners. My name is Greg McCabe. I reside at 6262 Galileo Drive, 89149. And I'm within, say, a mile of this proposed rezoning. I'm opposed of the rezoning for several of the same reasons that other people spoke tonight, including the fact that how relatively close it is to RMP land, as well as the conservation area that's very close to. And as far as the adjacent to the pit, the community pit, that I've been told is actually closing, that they're going to build a park there and other things, so-- Yeah, well, I think that's why, you know, so many people have been bringing up the fact of, you know, putting the garbage dump transfer station and the detention center because the whole thing has been kind of sneaky, the way that it was, it was done, that there were very few people notified of this. The sign was actually at the entrance of the pit area instead of maybe out near the highway where people would actually see it, that was notifying of the original meeting of this. So, I think that's kind of part of the reason why people are somewhat untrusting of what's going to happen with this land, you know? Plus the fact that, you know, that he just mentioned tonight, that it's next to a pit, but it's actually closing. So, anyway, I would urge you to vote against this rezoning, and like the other person said, that it's not necessary that it be rezoned in order for you to have control of this area. We were told that at one of the meetings, but--
I have to wholeheartedly disagree with you on that. Unless you can show statute, we have to have control of this by the zone change.
Well, I was told at the meeting with Councilman Ross that it was--
I need a name and a phone number, who told you that? And I will make sure that that number gets told to you again by a city official. But if it's by a private person, I can't stop that.
It wasn't a private person, it was somebody that Mr. Ross asked.
Name and a phone number.
I don't know. I wasn't taking pictures or recording or anything. That's the whole thing about this, you know, that people are so leery of it, you know, because they just change things and try to sneak stuff in and, you know--
One thing--
Say stuff and not mean it, you know? So, anyway--
One thing that's good about this, it's on the record, it's on television, so we'll be able to go back and look at these comments.
Okay. So, anyway, again, I oppose this, and I please wish that you won't change the zone.
Thank you, Mr. McCabe. Just a couple of questions to staff. I know I've heard a couple of people today talk about the notice area. Can we talk about the notice area? And also, another gentleman mentioned the sign location. Can you speak about where those sign locations are put so that everybody can see them? Thank you.
That specific question, I'll have to defer to Pete, but in terms of the, some of the neighborhood meetings we've held, I can speak to that.
Please do.
There have been three neighborhood meetings held, and we, recognizing that the required notification area would only get a few households, we went out four times beyond that, and then even extended it down to, I believe, Alexander, to the south, up to Centennial, to the north, which is well beyond any required, just because of the direction of the councilman, we wanted to make sure we were able to get as many people as we possibly could noticed for those neighborhood meetings. And there were three of those held. But as far as specific requirements, when we notice an item on the agenda, Pete will have to explain the--
In regards to the posting of actual physical sign, we have to place it on the subject property. In this particular case, as far as the visibility and actual access road, we try to place it in the most visible location that we can find that is actually on the subject site. Placing it in an NDOT right-of-way is not something that we have the permission to do, so we would have to adhere to the subject location.
Thank you.
And if I may--
Director Wheeler?
With regard to the actual notices by code, it is to all of the property owners of record, the county assessors within 1,000 feet, and also that all of the neighborhood associations that are registered within the city within one mile.
Thank you. Hope that clarifies that for those folks that had concerns. Yes, sir.
My name is Robert G. Leary, and I live at 9190 West Fisher Avenue, Las Vegas, Nevada, 89149. And first of all, I'd like to say I'm opposed to it. I've been to a number of these other meetings. And also, you were talking about Ann Road and 215. That was probably one of the worst corners around, and there's been, like was mentioned earlier, at least two fatal accidents up there, and there's a lot of other accidents, and there's still a stoplight there. Nobody's indicated what they're going to do, and I don't know if the city's going to put that, some kind of a road up there, but that's a real concern to me, that you're thinking of putting something up there like you're putting up there, or whatever it is when you decide. And I think that the, I don't think it should be rezoned until you make some kind of a commitment to what you're going to use it for. I think that's putting the cart before the horse. And I think the master plan should be, should not be, it shouldn't be zoned until it's changed. The city could take it in as a residential neighborhood, could they not? Couldn't they leave it as zoning as-is and acquire it, and then make a zone change later?
Let me defer that to staff.
The current zoning district is planned community development, which actually allows for a range of different zoning districts to appear, anything from residential to actual commercial at that location. It would require an application of a rezoning to a planned development, which in turn would for a development agreement, and you would get another providence or master development. But at this time, they would have to do a general plan amendment and another rezoning to get it to a residential specifically.
Well, my vote is to leave it as residential, and then if there's a consensus buyer of the neighborhood that you change it to something else, such as a park or some other kind of facility, then you can rezone it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman? Jim Lewis, the Attorney's Office. I, yeah, I don't want to jump in here except to say that I might want to clarify something for the commission and maybe for the folks out there. It is my understanding that in order for us to complete the BLM process and obtain this land, it's necessary for us to get the CV zoning. I might ask the Planning Department, Mr. Perrigo, if that's correct. But that may explain to folks out there and to this commission why it is we're moving forward today instead of waiting for some time in the future to move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Yes, sir. Mr. Perrigo?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. That part of the process I have not dealt with, so I can't speak to that. That's, real estate gets the leases, that's not necessarily my area of expertise, so I can't confirm what Jim said, I just don't know.
If I may, I can only add that the purpose of the city in obtaining the property and going through this process to get the general plan and the zoning for public facilities is that the intention is not to be residential development, and the city would not be seeking a residential developer. That is not the point of the process that is before you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Commission members, my name is Leroy Lamarrue. I am a resident at 6055 Egan Crest, approximately one mile north and east of the proposed land use change. The question I have for the commission this evening is, if the commission approves the land use change, can they make a stipulation along with their approval that the notice range, area for the future notices be substantially expanded? Despite what has been stated here tonight, living within one mile or less than one mile, I have never received posted notice. Never. Okay? Maybe they sent it out, and maybe our illustrious post office department didn't get them there, but I have never received notices. I'm getting it because neighbors have heard, neighbors have spoken to neighbors, we now have internet connection that is informing us, but it's not happening. So if they're saying it is, maybe they're doing their best they can, but it's not happening. So I'm asking the commission if they could please, as part, if they approve it, and I would oppose it, they could expand the requirement to get it out to three, four miles as a requirement that the city staff do that, so that we know. Most of us are in the county, we're not going to hear from the city, and that has been raised before. We want to hear it impacts our community absolutely versus people that are not out there, and they're not the city. The city doesn't have land out in that RMP area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I might please, I would like to respond to Mr. Lewis's question and what Commissioner Dunham was saying. The city simply cannot obtain a lease for anything but a public purpose. Now, the only thing that I'm not clear on is if there's some requirement in federal law that says that we have to have it zoned that way. But we cannot obtain a lease without having civic zoning and identifying that as a need for a public purpose. So I just want to clarify that, because I think it's a critically important point.
Yes. But I think it goes to, the one gentleman said, why can't you zone it residential, and then when you decide what you're going to do, rezone it? But again, the city cannot do it with the intent of making it residential, it has to be civic.
That's correct.
And if I may, just in case there was some misunderstanding, when I indicated the notices within one mile, that is to the registered neighborhood associations. I did not indicate, and if there was a misunderstanding, I apologize, it is only one mile for the registered neighborhood associations, not for individual properties, although Mr. Perrigo referred to the expanded noticing for the neighborhood meetings.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Ursula Luchinger, and I reside at 6325 North Grand Canyon Drive, 89149. My question is, or I'm opposing the proposed zoning change. One of the reasons is that it is a humongous area. I mean, it's huge. We're not talking about 30 acres here, we're talking huge. And I just don't understand why it is that the city will want to have this for public uses in such a big area. Why can't we just have a small part of it? We all understand that there is progress in the city and that other people need facilities, but why does it have to be so big? Isn't there a possibility to at least only do a quarter of what you're asking for?
Thank you.
Ma'am, while you're there, ma'am, I got a question for you. How often do you paint your house? Outside of your house?
How can I paint?
No, how often do you paint the outside of your house? Once every 10 years, maybe?
I'm sorry, I'm not in that business. I have absolutely no idea.
Okay, but if you were to take a wild guess, how often do you paint the outside of your house? Maybe once every 10 years?
Maybe.
12? Okay. What color are you going to paint it in 30 years?
I'm--
I'm putting that in perspective.
I understand.
We have to get control of 131 acres now. If we don't, we lose it. So we're doing what we can to get control of 131 acres. I don't know what color your house is going to be in 10 years, I certainly don't know in 20, on mine either, but this is the first step for us to get control. If we don't, it's gone.
I understand, but there's also a lot of land further north where you could make up the difference. So if you were asking for 30 acres--
That's not on the table. That land north of there is not on the table.
But on the table--
This is what's on the table for us today.
I understand, I understand. It's the size that I'm referring to, and it's not necessary, from my point of view, to have it this big. Thank you.
That's almost like with any building, as soon as you build it, it's outdated already, so, anyway. Anybody else would like to speak for or against this item? No, you've had one go around. No, ma'am.
No?
No, ma'am. No. Would anybody else like to speak on this item? We'll go ahead and close the public hearing at this time. Questions, comments from the board?
Yes, if I could, please.
Vice Chairman Trowbridge?
I'd like to ask one question of the people in public works, not to put them on the spot, but do we have any indication at all what NDOT's intentions are regarding the Ann and 215 interchange? I understand that there was something planned out there that might encroach on this 131 acres, and we don't know how much or when.
Well, technically, it's Clark County that owns the right-of-way, not NDOT, and they do have plans to widen it into a full four-lane facility with a full interchange at that location at Ann. But I am not familiar with any particular land use that they were proposing for that area.
But it would just, it would eat up part of the acreages where I'm-- But it would just, it would eat up part of the acreages where I'm going. And with all the drawings, do we have any idea where it might, how far it might encroach on the 131?
If I may, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Trowbridge, I believe that this, the drawing that's on this map is a representation of the planned alignment for the Beltway, that they're actually, will be under construction very soon, I understand. And so it shows that the Anne Road interchange relative to this site.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Now, let me just, let me just talk for a minute. Thank you for getting going. Not to present myself as an expert, because it's been eight years since I've been in the business, but I used to do a lot of acquisition of BLM land. I did it for public purposes. I was the county parking recreation director, and we had to checkerboard, thank you, the entire valley years and years in advance of acquiring the land. The reason is, or the way that public agencies acquire land from the Bureau of Land Management, and the rules may have changed in eight years, so don't say that some official told you and it's the God's truth, because I'm just telling you my recollection from the way it worked eight years ago, was that the land was acquired under what's called the Recreation and Public Purposes Act, RMPP is what they call it, which means that if the federal government was going to transfer land to a local agency, the first requirement was it was for recreation or a public purpose. Therefore, the land had to be zoned for either recreation or a public purpose, or they wouldn't transfer it. They would definitely not transfer land to you that was shown to be residential for fear that the public agency was not appropriately going to be developing residential. So they were going to sell it at a profit, and therefore, the BLM would not let that happen. It had to be for a public purpose. We used to submit plans to acquire that land that were so ambiguous that they could not hold our feet to the fire. And we did it for a specific reason, is because we were out acquiring land far in advance of any development. And so we didn't know what type of community that park was intended to serve. We would submit what's called a bubble drawing. I mean, we were going after 40 acre, 640 acre, large parcels, the bigger the better, because you can always give it back. You can't get more. And we would submit drawings that would show how that 640 acre was going to be used with a big circle that said youth play area. And then next to it, another big circle that said adult play area. Then another big circle that would say parking area. And then another big circle would say access point. And the other one would say future recreational development. And the BLM would accept it. And that is how vague and ambiguous a plan needs to be submitted to acquire the land. Now, of course, when we got around to building a park, we would have multiple public hearings, and then it would gain focus. The youth recreation area would become little league fields, soccer fields, swimming pools, outdoor basketball courts, play areas with apparatus. The adult areas would become soccer fields, rugby fields, bocce courts, whatever. But they would gain focus the closer you came to development. Now, we talk about that being, Mrs. Tinker, I believe, mentioned it was a huge parcel. Well, when you're acquiring land from the BLM, it costs you a ton of money just in the application process. The city's been working on this for well over two years to acquire this land. And we're just now at the point where we're getting ready to go forward on bended knee to ask please. Now, a huge portion of land, sounds like it when you think about your home being on one acre. But when you're talking about something for public purposes, 131 acres, I'll take it to the bank when I'm telling you, five years or 10 years from now, when they get around to developing it, when they go around to taking out the public easements and roads and those kinds of portions out of that 131, and when you go to each of the city departments and say, what are your needs in this area? That 131 acres, there'll be a major battle between the city departments over who gets it. Any surplus land, my favorite always comes into play, we can always make it green and call it a park. We can use that for buffers for the undesirable elements that might be included. You know, what they might be, God only knows. It might be a noisy fire station. It might be a police station. I personally live about two blocks from one of these city yards, the one at Buffalo and Cheyenne, I believe it is. And it's quiet, it's got a block wall around it that's attractive, there's no noise, there's no aroma, there's nothing associated with it. And I too live in a nice home, and just a couple of blocks from that one right there. And so just because it's a city thing, doesn't all of a sudden, don't think of it as something ugly. It might be something really nice. And the larger the parcel, the better off you are. You folks are of an economic means that you'll understand when I talk dollars and cents to you. An acre of land under the RMPP Act costs taxpayers $2.50 per acre. How many of you folks out there would be willing to sell your property for $2.50 an acre? Absolutely none of you. It's ludicrous. And that's why I pointed out, five or 10 years from now, when the need is going to be at its greatest, if the city were not to acquire this parcel now, they would go out and they'd say, we need, let's just say, one acre, 1.3 acres to build a fire station. Someone would be willing to sell the city 1.3 acres for a fire station, but they would want about a million, million and a half for it. Now, I'm talking $2.50 an acre for 131 acres versus a million, million and a half for 1.2 acres. Get your calculators out and see what would happen if you really needed to fill 131 acres, which I am fairly confident saying that they'll find a proper use for that kind of acreage. Now, I'm 100% behind, full disclosure, of what's going to be constructed just the minute you know it. I'm 100% behind letting everybody know what's intended out there and get as much public support as you can, because after all, the community that's being serviced is not the city. The people down in the lakes, or the people at Desert Shores, or the people over on the other side of town, aren't going to be the ones who are going to benefit from this. It's going to be the people in your neighborhood at the time. So to get your input is critical. You might, I've read in the paper here recently, and some of you might be involved in the issue, it's the Clark County shooting park. Have you heard of that? One of the big reasons that is a big problem now is because that parcel was shown on the maps as PF, the county's equivalent to what we're asking for here, public facility. It was shown as PF, I believe, in error, because it was talked about as early as the mid-1980s, as to what was intended out there. A large shooting park with bullets and buffer zones and the noise that goes with them and the traffic and all that was well discussed in the early 80s. It didn't actually happen until 2001 is when it was finally transferred. There were still no homes out there in 2001, just like there's no homes out there on the other side of 215 currently. But by the length of time when the money becomes available, and the plan becomes clear, and the need evolves, no telling what's going to be on that other side. And therefore, what need might emerge has not happened as of yet. No one can tell what's going to be needed out there, any more than the poor lady could tell us what color she was going to paint her house in 30 years. You just don't know. You know, I can go, I can go on and on, but currently, that property out there is zoned such that if BLM was to turn it to private development, you'd have between two and eight houses per acre. We all know that there's going to be a major, 215 is becoming a major freeway. A parcel that close to that, what's going to be that busy of a highway, where we're told that the area out there is going to go from 120,000 people to over 300,000 people in the next 20 years, there's going to be a lot of people out there. That highway will be busy. And so the thought of building something in the density of eight acres, eight units per acre, it's not going to come to be. I've sat up here for a few years now and can tell you, somebody will come forward and want to put in high-density housing. They'll want to put in apartments, because that's what you want up to the freeway. It's a good transition before you move to the more expensive homes. That's what will evolve. And so asking for PF is, one, it's a necessary step in acquiring the land in an economically feasible fashion. Two, it allows the city the opportunity to do good advanced planning. How far advanced? We're talking five years minimum between you and me. With the current slowdown in the housing market, we're probably talking a lot closer to 10 or 15. You know, by the time the county gets around building out the 215 and designing what kind of interchange is necessary, we don't know what kind of property is truly going to be available. There'll be some weird little remnant pieces that aren't really suitable for much, other than just green space, perhaps. You know, so there's a lot going on here, and no one has a crystal ball. None of the residents do that we want to service. The planning department doesn't have a crystal ball, and I certainly don't have one. And so all you can say is that if there's a commitment, and like a couple of suggestions were made, which I think are excellent, and I think we ought to incorporate them, one is that we expand the notification area. I think that makes perfectly good sense. We, there's another one that was really good. The needs of the city aren't representing what the city's interested in. The needs that'll be shown there are going to be the needs of the residents, that's you folks. And what do you really need out there in five years? Which one of you can tell me what you're really going to need in 10 years? None of you can. You're going to be guessing. I can guess with you. We can all guess, but it's really nothing to put on paper and say, that's what it's going to be. That's a contract between the city and the residents. It doesn't work that way.
I have a question.
It's up to the chair, and I wouldn't think so. But I think I've made my point. Thank you for listening to me.
Mr. Chairman.
Let me go. Any more questions by commissioners?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Evans?
Yes, thank you. Just real quickly, as a general rule, I don't like to vote on general plan amendments and/or zone changes if there's not an accompanying site plan, for the very reasons that many of the people here have voiced concerns. It's my understanding that the legal parameters for a general plan and a zone change then allow a site plan a greater degree of, it's easier to get. I'm told in this case that there is an opportunity for additional public hearing. And given what I've heard this evening from both my fellow members of the commission and the city staff, it sounds like this proposal has a substantial amount of support. I still haven't made up my mind, but I do want to empathize with the concerns the neighbors have, because I share them on almost every zoning matter that I voted on in the last seven years. And I'm wondering, within that framework, if we can't maybe look to our staff and to our city, along with those residents who live out there, in creating some sort of, you know, needs assessments like Commissioner Trowbridge had discussed, where the neighbors are actively involved with what is needed there. I think that's certainly a possibility. The other thing that I would like to see maybe explored, we certainly don't know what's going to be there, but I've heard a few things about what is not going to be there. And maybe that's something that can be addressed as well, even though we're not at the site plan stage. My, from what I'm told, we're simply trying to acquire the land from the federal government. And my question, I guess, to the staff, and I don't know, Commissioner Trowbridge, you may be the expert here, but the Southern Nevada Lands Management Act and the disposal process, what is the consequence if the city does not seek this land? Can the BLM then put it out for public auction? And would that open up for individual developers to create master planned communities? Or is that an area where that likely would not occur? And do civic uses and government entities get a, in the disposal process, I mean, obviously, they don't pay the same amount, but do they get some sort of preferential in the application process? So those are a couple of my questions. And Commissioner Trowbridge, perhaps you might have the answer, or one of our staff. But I do want to empathize with those people who live out there, because I have shared those concerns about not knowing what would, you know, conceivably be built next to you.
Commissioner Evans, I'll let Mr. Perrigo respond, but I think with the phrasing of your question, we're getting into some legal parameters. So I'll defer that to our city attorney, Mr. Lewis.
Thank you, Chairman. I'll be brief on this. Basically, if the city doesn't move forward with its application, what I understand is Clark County School District is next in line. If Clark County School District does not move, then at some point, the land could become up, could be nominated for disposal. And that would mean auction to the highest bidder. And so what's possible out there? Not sure. I mean, it's a myriad of possibilities. But what we do know is that if the city goes out, if the city zones it, a public facility, civic, excuse me, civic, and we acquire the lease, then the city can control the uses that are taken to that land.
Thank you.
If I may, Commissioner, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to just add to that, to be clear, the Public Lands Act does spell out a process for disposing land. The BLM has a mandate to dispose all the land within the disposal boundary. And the process of disposing the land requires that it goes through what's called a joint selection process. So if some agency were to approach the BLM to get a lease, they would have to, they're required to, go through joint selection, which means the city would have to sign a letter concurring with that action, but only on the grounds. The only way that we could stop that is if we show that we have a public need for that land, a public purpose need. We're first in line. Now, that hasn't always been followed in the past, and there are some provisions that does allow BLM to go ahead and sell the land. But for the most part, for the most part, the nomination for sale or the application for lease is supposed to go through a joint selection with the city. Like I said, that hasn't happened in the past. There's a number of school district sites that have been leased without joint selection. BLM is working with all the local agencies through the Southern Nevada Regional Planning Coalition to fix that and make sure that all those applications go through joint selection. But again, we can't just say, no, we don't want them to have it. We can only say, we have a need for it. We would request that you do not grant their request for a lease, or grant their request to have it nominated for sale.
Thank you. Vice Chairman Trowbridge, if you have any comments? If not, we'll go back to Commissioner Evans.
If somebody spoke about the, what could happen, you know, we talk about 131 acres being huge. A high school site, they want a minimum of 80 acres. Now, I can envision, if the city doesn't go for it, I can envision the school district going for it with the thought of building a high school plus a bus yard. And that, think of Friday Night Lights and the traffic at 3:00 and the traffic at 7:00 and, that's the way it works.
Commissioner Evans, any more comments?
No, that concludes my remarks. But I did want to thank everyone for taking the time on this hot afternoon to come out.
Thank you. Comments? Commissioner Steinman?
I heard somebody say, there's been no time to compromise. We need more time to compromise. And yet I did hear that you've made an excellent effort and were involved with the waste transfer process and basically got that stopped. And I'd say that's a touch of compromise involved there. And also, I think you've been told that there's not going to be a booking or detention facility there. And I think that is a bit of compromise that's occurred already. So I think there has been compromise. When I look at the service yard that Commissioner Trowbridge talked about down at Buffalo and Cheyenne, I look at that yard, and that yard services the entire Northwest. It's incredible, the distances they have to go from that yard. And the city, maybe the growth got away from the city, and they should have found a 100-acre site long before this because of the growth in the Northwest. But they didn't, and now they need to react and find a facility to service the residents of our city. So I hear you loud and clear about you don't know what's going to happen here. And that is a touch scary, I must admit. But I also, on the other side of it, understand the process that we have to go through to get the city in a position to control. And control is the issue here, and we need this land in the future to service all those people that have already moved in in the Northwest, and the more that are coming whenever this market turns around later on. Thank you.
Mr. Truesdale?
Just a brief comment. In the Northwest out here, we've tried for years and years to, we've created town center where we clustered retail, so we didn't have to encroach in the neighborhoods. We've tried to do the roadway system, so we've, there's been a lot of advanced planning, the kind of planning that is presented to you tonight. Our open space plan in the Northwest that Mr. Perrigo's team helped shepherd through, which requires us to have open space of a greater extent out here. All of this. All of this is, this planning is for a better quality of life in this Northwest. And if we don't take advantage of a site like this for public facilities, we will be forced, like every other community in this valley and throughout the West, of coming into neighborhoods east of the freeway and having to look, where do we put facilities there? The city will, the city or county will be stuck paying greater prices for that. Everybody's economics will be affected, plus we will be in front of the neighbors with less workable plans because we didn't take the effort to do this advanced master planning. And I think the fact that our, the, I truly believe the city's master plan process has worked well. No, has everybody been notified? No. Nothing's perfect. But a lot of you are here, most of you have indicated you've been to several meetings, so that shows our process is working. And the fact that everybody's trying to communicate what's happening here, we've made the commitments that we're not, nothing else is going to go forward on this property without other public hearings. And I think this is the most appropriate use of the city's planning process. And yes, it's years ahead of possibly the end use, but that's what cities can do that private citizens don't get the luxury of always doing.
Thank you.
Briefly.
Commissioner Quinn.
I know when Denise Aaron-Sibia is involved in anything, she's going to fight and work really hard to do what's best for her neighborhood, her community. I've had the privilege to be in a school with her for many years. But when you see this many neighbors come out and work, you shouldn't be looking at what you're not gaining. You should be looking at and being thankful for what you're doing because you are working together and you've already got the city on your side. You've got a great councilman, you've got a great commissioner. And I think if you lose this to another entity, you're going to be going backwards and not forwards. And in the beginning of the night, I was not for this change, but after listening to the reasons why the city of Las Vegas needs this parcel, I believe in my heart, Denise and all of you, that it's for your best interests because you're going to have to start over with a whole new entity if we don't gain this parcel. And I know what you can do, Denise, and I know that you can move mountains and do great things and just keep your group together and I think that you're going to have a great project here and it's going to be better than you think. So, I'm going to agree with the city on this one.
No more comments from the board? We'll entertain a motion on item nine, GPA 25625, please.
I'll make a motion to approve of agenda item number nine.
Motion on the floor to approve number nine, yes is for approval. Please cast your vote. And that motion has passed. Item 10, ZON 25626, motion please.
Motion to approve agenda item number 10.
Motion on the floor for approval, please cast your votes. And that has been approved as well.
Both matters will be on the August 20th City Council Agenda.
Right. Okay. I know Denise, you wanted some additional comments. If you'd like to, we can't take any action during the citizens' participation, but you are welcome to stay towards the end of the meeting and we'll allow you some time to put it on the record. Thank you.
Did you say August 20th?
20th.
August 20th.
August 20th. Okay.
Thank you.
And I believe also, Mr., is it Lamarril?
Sure.
With the notice area, I don't know if you're out in the county, but if you, if you'd like to keep abreast and be notified, I kindly encourage you to go to Commissioner Ross's website, make your request through email and Sheila Lambert in his office will be glad to follow up and keep you abreast of this.
I did that, sir, and quite frankly, I did that quite some time ago. I've never seen one email from that office.
Well, I would tell you to call 229-6405 and ask for Councilman's office.
At this point, I'm on leave.
Thank you. Sidebar with Mr. Dunham. We're going to move on to item 11 and 12, ZON 28018. Applicant, Blohaus Development LP, owner, Art Central South LLC, from R4 High Density Residential to R5 Apartment at the southwest corner of Utah Avenue and Casino Center Boulevard. Related item number 12, SDR 28071, for a 55-unit apartment complex with waivers to the downtown Centennial Streetscape and architectural standards. Staff?
Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, when this item was heard last month, there were concerns about the waiver from the Streetscape standards. Staff has done some additional research and some work and let me just give you some information here. Number one, the Streetscape treatment that is required by the downtown Centennial Plan needs to be located in the public right-of-way. And so that's the area between the back of curb and the property line. There was question about, could the building be moved back to install the Streetscape? And actually, the building is in the location that it needs to be per the Centennial Plan. In looking at the existing conditions there, there's approximately six feet now between the back of curb and the property line, so it does not give the applicant sufficient room to install the Streetscape that is required by the Centennial Plan and hence the waiver. One of the things that staff has done in the past month, though, is to add a condition to the SDR case, and that would be condition number 22, where the applicant is required to sign a covenant that at some future point in time where the city looks to expand the area between the back of curb and the property line, the applicant will be responsible for installing the Streetscape treatment at that point in time. Just to give you an example, the city has recently installed Streetscape along Casino Center just immediately south of Charleston. We've gone in a multiple block area, we've widened the sidewalk and installed street trees. What we would look to do is at some point in the future in that block where we can do it along the full length of the block, we would look at perhaps moving the curb line and that would allow us to install the Streetscape. And again, the applicant would be required to do their frontage, their portion of the frontage of that Streetscape. So relative to that issue, we have added condition number 22, which does require them to install that at some point in the future where we can do so along the full length of the block. Secondly, there was some concern relative to the elevations of the building. In the interim, the applicant submitted us 3D renderings, which you have up on the screen before you. Again, we supported the waivers from the Centennial Plan architectural requirements in the past and continue to do so with the additional information that the applicant has given us. Thank you.
Thank you. Applicant?
Yes, sir. Jim Torri, Blohaus Development, 1600 National Avenue, San Diego, California, 92113. And we are in agreement with staff's recommendations and approve the conditions, as well as I've prepared three boards for your review and approval. And I think you have copies of that, but I brought larger copies for the purpose of discussing the facade and some of the elevation design we talked about last time.
Okay. You have those boards with you?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Let me go ahead and open a public hearing. This is a public hearing. Anybody in the audience for or against this item, please come forward.
Thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. I'm not totally familiar with what was just said there, but as the downtown gets ever more denser, we are going to need these wider sidewalks. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Comments or questions from the board? Commissioner Evans?
Yes, I think you will remember I'm the one that was giving all the grief the last time around about the Streetscape. And it's been explained to me some of the site constraints from allowing that to happen, but I do have a greater degree of comfort. And maybe, Mr. Anderson, maybe you can help me here, that there's a mention in the draft report that when the street widths would be reconfigured, that we can provide a covenant that would require the installation of landscaping to somewhat, if not substantially, meet our Streetscape requirements. Do we have any idea if that's going to happen, when it's going to happen? Is it a realistic, I mean, I'm assuming we really don't know at this point.
And that is correct. We don't know a specific date, but it is reasonable to assume that as this site and others like it in the areas start to redevelop, their neighbors will also look to redevelop. And as Flynn indicated, we would rather, because the Streetscape needs the curb line to move towards the center of the street, we would rather not do that one property at a time. So what we can do is require each property that comes in to sign a covenant. And once we have all of those properties on a block agreeing to it, then we can say, you know what, now's the time, let's do it the whole block. So I can't predict a specific date, but I am confident that as this development and others come in, the rest of downtown will want to redevelop as well.
Can that be something that even though the street may be developed piecemeal, that would we, we could make a policy of somewhat requiring it for all of them so that at some point in time it's seamless?
Absolutely. That is the intent. And so the condition that we've added, the covenant condition, will be added to every development that comes in. And once we have a contiguous group of them, then we can force the issue and put in those improvements.
But, and I guess my question is, for the protection of, you know, the long-term goal, is it something that an applicant can come in on an individual property and say, we object to condition number 22 and would rather not do it? And then we end up with, you know, one property with a Streetscape and one not? And is that something that we can hold the line on?
If they come in at a meeting like this, or at City Council, and say, I don't want to agree to the covenant, then I suppose they could fight it, but it would really be up to the planning commission and/or the city council to determine whether to impose it.
But conceptually...
Once it's imposed, then we have a legal agreement with them that they will not oppose in the future. That's what the covenant is. We will not fight you in the future. Does that prevent them from doing so? No, but it certainly makes it a lot harder for them to win.
And I guess, I think our staff is in agreement with me. And I suspect, I'm told that you do some really good projects. You did, did you do part of the Gaslight in San Diego or?
Done a few projects there.
Projects, and everybody speaks real highly of them. It's just that from my perspective, we put all that money and time into the area south of, south of Charleston on Casino Center. And our real goal is that that whole Arts District area will become vibrant and pedestrian-oriented, pedestrian-friendly. And that absolutely will not happen without a shade canopy and some sort of aesthetic, you know, that would allow that. When I was looking at your building, and I'm not going to redesign it for you, but one of the things that occurred to me was that even though you may be constrained by the street level because you need to push the building out, I guess to pencil it out, my thought was, and I remember Commissioner Truesdale, you had a project a number of years ago that had a little mezzanine level that I believe had public sculpture and, and I believe some trees and planters and things like that. I think that would give it a great aesthetic look. Obviously, you've already designed it, so I'm not going to play architect, but I do think there are some things that you could have done that maybe would have given me a greater degree of sunshine on this project. And then lastly, I think in the staff report, it talked about, I think there's, on some level, you're doing an interior courtyard. And it said that you were going to provide artificial turf and then you specified the plantings. And I think one of them, you mentioned a horseshoe or a horsetail plant. And I don't know if it's the same one that I'm thinking of, the horsetail is the one that is incredibly water, a real water user. I mean, it's one of the, it probably would require more water than if you put real turf in there. So, it's something you might want to relook at if in fact it is that same species. They literally live in a moist, continuously wet environment if it's the one I'm thinking of. But, you know, I somewhat have to rely on our staff and I think they understand my concerns. And if you're willing to agree to the covenants and we can eventually get that, you know, to where it's not a sea of concrete, then this will seem my support.
Chairman, if I may, I'd just like to follow up briefly to respond to one other thing for Commissioner Evans. One of the other aspects of a covenant running with land is it is a pre-agreement to a special improvement district. And if we have everybody on the street pre-agreeing to the SID, we can force an SID and force all of the developer, property owners to essentially fund that improvement.
Right. And you know what I'm saying? I'm looking at this illustration that's up right now and I'm thinking of every other city that I've been in, every other great city, they have tree grates and the sidewalks are right on the Streetscape and it's, completely changes the character of the building and that's where I really would like to see the downtown go.
And while I concur, the street grates, the tree grates need to be where currently there's a lane. And in the future, we will be able to narrow that street and accommodate them.
Any more comments or questions by the commissioners? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion on item 11.
Mr. Chairman, I will, I will make a motion to follow the recommendation of the staff for approval of agenda item number 11.
Motion's on the floor. Please cast your vote. And that motion has been approved. Item 12?
And on item 12, and I would ask the staff, is the condition 22 in the new, in the new backup? Okay. So, my motion would be to follow the recommendation of the staff for approval with all the conditions and I would ask the applicant if he concurs with all the conditions as well.
Yep. Come back up to the podium.
Yes, we concur with the conditions.
Thank you very much. Motion for approval.
Motion for approval, please cast your vote. And that motion has passed.
And all matters go forward to City Council on August 20th.
Our next item, item 13, SDR 28121, applicant Nevada Hand Inc., owner, city of Las Vegas, for a 144-unit multifamily residential development on the south side of Owens Avenue, approximately 850 feet west of Main Street. And I want to note that the applicant has revised the unit total to 150 units. Also, I noticed Nevada Hand has three more requests on the agenda tonight, items 36 and 38. I'll go ahead and pull those up, so we'll take those in order and get you all done while we're at the podium, okay? Staff?
Mr. Chairman, the proposed redevelopment of the subject site will enhance the area by providing quality multifamily housing, as well as meet the policies and tensions of the neighborhood revitalization strategy area. Therefore, staff is recommending approval of this application. Furthermore, staff would like to delete condition number nine. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jackie Haas. I'm representing Nevada Hand, 295 East Warm Springs, Las Vegas, Nevada. And we're here tonight to agree with staff's recommendation.
Okay. Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience for or against this item? Please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Comments and questions from the board? Commissioner Truesdale?
There's no comments. I'll move for approval. Subject on staff, conditions, deleting condition number nine.
Motion's on the floor for approval of item 13 with the deletion of condition number nine. Please cast your vote.
Chair, go ahead.
Madam Clerk?
I don't see your vote.
And that motion has passed.
Goes forward to Council on August 20th.
Let's move on to items 36 through 38, which are related items. Item 36 is GPA 28521, Nevada Hand Inc., owner, city of Las Vegas Housing Authority, from ML Medium Low Density Residential to M Medium Density Residential at 1818 Bowzar. Item 37, ZON 28523, from RMHP Residential Mobile Manufactured Home Park to R3 Medium Density Residential. And also, item 38, SDR 28524, for a proposed two-story, 111-unit senior citizen apartment building. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, the proposed general plan amendment rezoning and site development plan review will facilitate the development of senior citizen apartment buildings, which will further the goals of Las Vegas Master Plan 2020 and the West Las Vegas Plan. Therefore, staff is recommending approval of these applications. Furthermore, staff would like to amend condition number two of SDR 28524 to reflect a date stamp of July 10th of 2008. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Applicants?
Shall I introduce myself again?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, sorry. Jackie Haas, Nevada Hand, 295 East Warm Springs, Las Vegas, Nevada. We're here tonight to agree with staff's recommendations.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Would anybody like to speak for or against this item? Please come forward.
Thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. And I just want to take just one moment to thank Nevada Hand for that beautiful project they're doing on Stewart and 13th Street. They're doing a beautiful job here.
Thank you. Seeing no one else, we'll close the public hearing. Any comments or questions from the board? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion on Item 36.
There's no comments. I'll make a motion on Item Number 36, General Plan Amendment 28521. Motion to approve, subject to all staff conditions.
Motion's on the floor for approval of Item 36. Please cast your vote. And that motion has passed. Item 37.
Regarding zoning 28523, make a recommendation for approval, subject to all staff conditions.
Motion on the floor for approval. Please cast your vote. And that motion has passed. Item 38.
Site development review 28524, make a recommendation for approval, subject to all staff conditions with the adjustment of the one condition to reflect the appropriate date stamp as suggested by staff.
Motion on the floor for approval of Item 38. Please cast your vote. Ms. Haas?
Actually...
One moment.
Oh, sorry. On the previous one, you deleted the Condition Number 9. I believe that's Condition Number 10 on this, so we would ask for the same thing to be deleted.
Yes.
Okay.
Can I simply amend that, Mr. Attorney, or do we have to rescind that?
If it's for the one coming up, just go ahead and amend your motion. If it was on the one prior, then we'd rescind the action and redo it. It's on 38? Fantastic.
Okay.
So the recommendation for approval, subject to all staff conditions, with the exception of Number 10, which is deleted, and the correction of the date stamp condition.
Okay. Please cast your votes. And that has been approved.
All matters go forward to Council on August 20th.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Very welcome. Item 15, GPA 27006, General Plan Amendment, public hearing, applicant owner City of Las Vegas, request to adopt a Public Services and Facilities element and revise the 2020 Master Plan. And we'll take a short break after this item. Staff?
Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, the Public Services and Facilities element is required by Nevada revised statutes to show the general plans for sewage, drainage, utilities, rights-of-way easements, and facilities. We will be happy to report to you that this is one of three remaining master plan elements that we have left in order to bring ourselves into full compliance with Nevada revised statutes. In this element itself, if I could move on to the next slide, we have a number of recommendations, and let me just go through those briefly with you. Recommendation Number 1 in this element is to align our plans for all stormwater conveyance so that it's in conformance with federal mandates. The second recommendation that we are proposing as part of this master plan element is to require utility companies to comply with NRS requirements, and this is more specifically related to reporting requirements and also the use of special use permits before the Planning Commission for utilities that are not in public rights-of-way. Moving on to the next slide, recommendation Number 3 is relative to developing long-term and an all-inclusive master plan to eliminate aerial utilities. Just to give you an example of this, the Public Works Department and the Planning Department have been working with Nevada Power on what we call Project Clear Skies, specifically related to undergrounding utilities in the downtown area. And what we intend to do is to further that relationship and also look at how we can beautify the downtown area through those efforts. Recommendation Number 4 is to continue to support and participate in public services and facilities planning through working groups. To give you an example of the working groups in which we're currently participating, Number 1 is the Stormwater Work Group, where we are working with the other entities in the Valley in terms of complying with federal guidelines for stormwater management. And another one is our Project Clear Skies, as I mentioned earlier, where we're working with Nevada Power in terms of how we can provide power needs in the downtown area. Moving on to our next slide, recommendation Number 5 is relative to looking at the use of reclaimed water and how we might be able to include that in the future and do a better job of providing that to facilities within the city. That concludes my presentation in terms of the recommendations that are included in the document. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to take those now.
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak for or against this item? Seeing, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Any comments or questions from the board on Item 15? No questions or comments?
No.
Commissioner Steinman?
I just want to know, in your recommendation Number 5, how do you plan to use the recycled water? What, I know we're doing it on golf courses up in our area where I am, but do you have other plans for recycle?
Not currently. We're typically looking at our public facilities, parks, golf courses, et cetera, where it's feasible to use reclaimed water at this point in time, and that really is the extent of what we're looking at.
And we really haven't extended to our public parks yet, have we? We're just up on the golf courses?
Primarily golf courses right now.
Yeah. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if there are no other comments, I'd make a motion for approval.
If I might just interject one last thing, I wanted to mention that with some of these recommendations, we're still refining the language. We have a couple of adjustments to make prior to City Council that don't impact basically the subject matter of the document, but we do have some refinements to make. So I just wanted to make sure that that was clear before Planning Commission this evening.
Thank you. Commissioner Truesdale, motion?
Motion for approval, subject to the comments that there might be further refinements.
Motion on the floor for approval of Item 15. Please cast your votes. Motion on the floor for approval.
Approved. And that goes forward to Council on August 20th.
We'll take about a 12-minute break here, and we'll come back and start with Item 16. We'll go ahead and begin, call the meeting to order. We're going to begin with Related Items 16 through 20. Item 16, GPA 28338, applicant owner Scott Ajon Edal from O Office to LIR Light Industrial Research at 4505 and 4515 Balsam Street, 4491 North Rainbow, and 2.39 acres, 300 feet south of Red Coach Avenue on Balsam Street. Item 17, ZON 28389, from RE Residential Estates, an undeveloped old office, general plan designation to CPB Planned Business Park and M Industrial. Item 18, VAR 28392, to allow a 4.62-acre CPB Planned Business Park zoning district where 20 acres is the minimum site area required, and to allow a 10-foot side setback where 50 feet is required for an M Industrial district located adjacent to a residential district. Item 19, VAC 28393, to vacate a 60-foot-wide portion of Balsam Street located approximately 300 feet south of Red Coach Avenue. Item 20, SDR 28390, for a proposed 51,250-square-foot warehouse center with an 18,100 square feet of office with waivers to allow a 10-foot landscape buffer on the eastern property line where 15 feet is required, and a 0-foot landscape buffer on the western and portions of the southern property line where 8 feet is required. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, the proposed general plan amendment fails to conform...
One second. Sorry. Mr. Chairman, I'm abstaining on this item inasmuch as I have a business partner who owns adjacent property.
Thank you. Sir? The proposed general plan amendment fails to conform to the adopted plans and policies of the Centennial Hills Sector Plan of the Las Vegas Master Plan 2020, nor is the proposed amendment compatible with the surrounding areas. Additionally, the proposed site fails to meet the minimum development standards required for the rezoning of the property, as well as the proposed development itself fails to comply with the Title 19 development standards, as is evident by the multiple waivers and variance requested. Therefore, therefore, staff has recommended denial of the general plan amendment and rezoning applications, as well as all associated applications. In addition, due to a field inspection done on June 17th, barbed wire was indicated to be on-site, which has not been illustrated on the submitted site plans. Therefore, we'd like to add a condition stating that all barbed wires to be removed from the subject site within 60 days of the approval of this application. Thank you.
Thank you. Applicant?
Good evening. Liz Serokak, 3800 Howard Hughes Parkway, here on behalf of the applicant. First, with respect to the additional condition that staff has placed on our applications regarding the barbed wire, we are fine with complying with that, and I was not aware of the barbed wire, so we're fine with that condition. Let's start with what we are proposing and why this is compatible with the area. We're proposing a 4.62-acre business park, which is the portion to the east on the aerials, portion to the east of existing Balsam alignment. And then, on the west side of the existing Balsam alignment, the two existing homes that are there would act as offices for the paving business and the outside storage yard, which is located behind these homes. The CPB zoning would be to the east of the Balsam alignment, and the industrial M zoning would be to the west of the Balsam alignment. So I'm going to take this down for just a minute. The map that I have up here is designed to show you why this is, why the general plan amendment and the zone change is appropriate for this area. This is an area that's in transition, and if you look at this map, I'll explain to you what's on here. The green parcels are the parcels before you in Applications 16 through 20, which are these parcels right here. The blue parcels here are controlled by the same client that I'm representing on 16 through 20, and he plans to expand what he's currently doing on these green parcels to the blue parcels. The orange parcels are for existing projects that have already been approved by the City of Las Vegas. This project here was a two-story office building that was recently approved in July, I believe, about a week ago, last week. And then, the other orange parcels up here, that was for 248-unit apartment complex, where the general plan was changed there as well to medium, which allows for 25 to the acre. The pink parcels located along Rainbow are the subject of the next set of applications that I'm representing, which is also for commercial zoning. And all of these dots on here, except for these two black ones here, the red dots represent non-residential development that has already been completed in the area. And the two black ones are parcels that my client also has under contract for commercial development. So I was just trying to, we're not trying to, we're taking into account the neighbors' concerns, because we do understand that there are neighbors that still live out there and people that have homes there, but I also wanted to illustrate to you that this area is in transition and that uses that may not look appropriate on the surface are appropriate, in fact, because this area is transitioning. So I'll go back to the plan now and just address a few of the issues that were brought up in the staff report. With respect to the landscaping waivers that we asked for, the landscaping along Rainbow here, we were going to provide 10 feet. We will provide 15 feet and comply with the code. On the west portion, this is where the landscaping waiver was, on the west portion, and my client has agreed to do the required landscaping here, as well as, in the, right now, there's a temporary NDOT wall that screens this equipment. It's eight feet tall. In the event NDOT removes that wall, my client has agreed to put up an eight-foot block wall to maintain the same screening level that you have now. As far as the one portion, which is right here, the southern portion where there's no landscaping, the reason for that requested waiver for landscaping is because this is already an existing, existing building. There's a gate here, and eventually, like I showed you on the prior map, the property that he owns to the north, he plans on expanding what's happening over here to the east, up to the north, so these buildings will eventually be demolished. So we're just going with what's existing there right now. The variances on the site, as far as the variance for the size of the business park, you know, that's a code requirement. We feel you can still have a viable business park even if it's not 20 acres. And as far as the separation from residential, normally 50 feet would be required from residential property. And in this case, again, my client does own the property to the north of this particular, where the violation is, so this, this property would not be adversely affected by having the industrial zoning here and not meeting the required setback. As far as the plans for the park itself, I think it's an attractive, it's an attractive-looking business park. It has the appropriate amount of parking and landscaping now, and there are 20-foot buildings that, that step up to 30 feet with office space and then warehousing capability. So although, and one other thing I wanted to mention, we did have a neighborhood meeting, and one of the concerns, I'll show you this one, I guess. One of the concerns of the neighbors right now is, right now, there's, the equipment yard and the businesses are operating off of these two green parcels. The traffic comes out to Balsam, goes up Balsam, cuts through the neighborhood, and they don't, they obviously don't like that kind of industrial and truck traffic coming through their neighborhood. So the good thing about this project is this portion of Balsam will be vacated, and the only access from these parcels will be across these parcels to Rainbow. So we'll be cutting off that truck traffic that's... So we'll be cutting off that truck traffic that's currently pestering the neighbors, and the neighbors were, um, happy about that and in support, and I believe I have one neighbor here tonight that will probably get up here and talk about this project. So with that, I respectfully request your approval.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, so anybody in the audience would like to speak for or against this item, please come forward. Mr. Farlow?
Todd Farlow, two forty North Nineteenth Street. Now, I think I'm against wa, or cutting off that, uh, cutting out Balsam from going on through, I think that's, that's a necessity. Second, be, those elevations, I, you know, she says those are great-looking things, I think they could be improved.
Come on up, sir.
My name is Roger Cale, I'm at forty five ninety seven North Balsam, directly in the corner of Balsam and Red Coach where all this business is taking place. Uh, here lately, we've had heavy-duty trucks, semis, large vans, many light pickups stored at forty five fifteen Balsam, and run back and forth on this narrow street, which is a dead end. Our main concerns are the heavy-duty trailers with tractors on them, and, uh, semis rolling up and down Balsam to forty five fifteen Balsam in the middle of a housing zone RE. Now, I've been in this property, this acre, for thirty-five years paying taxes, and I don't, never hold anybody from making progress and making money, that's what it's about, but I don't think the few of us neighbors that are there, and I've been paying taxes for thirty-five years, should have to have a chance of me losing the value of my property for some of this to take place.
Sir, if you could, could you point on that map approximately where your house is?
If I can see, understand the map. I'm right at the corner of, uh, Red Coach and Balsam. I'm on an acre and an eighth, and, uh, the freeway went in behind me there some years ago.
You're in the middle of the street, kind of-
No, I'm, I'm, I'm at the corner of Red Coach and Balsam.
Okay. Thank you, southwest corner. Thank you.
And like I say, uh, there used to be a lot of children playing the New Zealand bikes and ball and this and that, and since all these vehicles have taken place, this has kind of changed. Well, I understand that this, you know, things like this change, but I think it's unfair to us neighbors that have been there for all these years, keeping our properties up, paying taxes, that we should be able to be overcome by somebody comes in with plans, and I don't blame them for that, but I don't think that our property values should be knocked way down because of somebody trying to make money. Any consideration you can give us, I would really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, sir, before you leave, sir-
Excuse me, sir.
I still can't, I still can't seem to identify where your house is.
Well, right at the corner of Balsam and Red Coach.
He's right, sorry, he's right, you're right here, sir.
Yeah, right here.
Right there.
Here, here.
Okay. So it's kind of within, or you're sort of surrounded by this?
Uh, definitely, sir, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak on this item, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We'll ask the applicant to come back up and make some comments or remarks.
If I could ask a question-
Sure.
-let's speed things along here.
Okay.
If I understand the proposal correctly, the intent is to move what is currently the cul-de-sac north to the edge of the property line, the L-shaped parcel there?
Yes.
And the, the net effect of that would be that the traffic, there's now this gentleman's nemesis, will now be exiting directly out the front of the property to the east onto Rainbow.
Onto Rainbow, right.
And so the traffic that he's now having to endure will be going the other direction, so it truthfully should be a benefit to him.
Correct. And one other thing I did want to mention, um, as far as the existing bulb that's here, that's going to remain as a, um, the, the right-of-way will actually be vacated, but it'll remain as a utility easement.
Okay. That'd just be my second question.
Okay.
On that existing, uh, cul-de-sac there-
Yes.
At about the seven o'clock point on the, on the circle-
Mm-hmm.
There is currently a break in the wall, where it appears as though the business that's behind that wall has an emergency exit.
Correct.
Uh, is that going to remain in place, will they still have access to leave and-
As far as I know, yes. Yes.
As far, as far as I know isn't a very good legal term, as far as I know.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Steinman?
Would you please, uh, refer to, you just answered a question which threw me off, where's this exit that you, he just asked about?
There, I think it's, I actually think it's right here-
Oh, down there.
Five o'clock, but-
It's, it's at seven o'clock.
Seven, okay, so it's-
Six o'clock, okay.
There, down on this side is that storage facility that's here.
Where can they go?
Well, right now, there's a fire, a crash gate-
Yes.
-that exits out Balsam, so now the crash gate will go out and you'll have to exit through the business park.
Oh, okay. So the, the reality is that for his benefit, uh, when this is finally built, it really stops the issues that he's been having trouble with, but you have to wait till it's built, of course, between now and then, all, and you've complained before about this, and I know you have, that's going to continue probably because of those two people at the end of the street. I'm concerned, not, not tonight about this as much, but when the other two lots are built upon-
Yes.
-next to his house, I'm wondering where those people are going to go at that time when that happens, or is it going to be incorporated into what's happening on this site?
You're talking about the traffic?
Yeah.
I believe the plan is, would be to vacate all of Balsam up so that the traffic would only be exiting onto Rainbow.
Okay, okay, that's what I wanted to hear-
Okay.
-in that regard. So, and I think with the changes in the landscaping and so on, uh, I like what this project's going to be, I think it's going to work very well, and it's going to help your situation, believe it or not.
What, what is that going to do to my property values?
Well, I think what's happening-
Who's going to want to buy my property?
If you want the honest truth-
Yes.
Somebody's going to want to buy it that's doing all this work in there, and you're going to get a pretty good dollar for it someday. That's really what's going to happen.
I was made, I was made a statement by this gentleman already, and he's way down under what the property's value is.
Don't sell to him.
No, sir, I don't intend to.
I understand, but someday, uh, he'll come to you with the right price, let me assure you.
Well, the, the only other question I had is if the traffic, industrial traffic exits onto Rainbow and not onto, uh, Balsam, then that would be in our favor, too.
That's where it's going.
Because that's a dead end, it's a very narrow street.
That's where it's going.
Okay, so thank-
And I think it's taken care of.
Thank you.
Sure.
And I'll just quickly throw in, I've opened and closed the public hearing again, so we didn't get his comments on the record. Thank you. Any more questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion on item sixteen.
Item sixteen, which is GPA two eight three eighty-eight, move for approval, subject to conditions.
Motion on the floor for approval of item sixteen, please cast your votes.
Yeah.
Please cast your votes on item sixteen.
Commissioner Dunham?
Dunham.
Mr. Dunham?
You can say, you can say Sam, and I'll get it done.
Sam Dunnigan again.
And that has passed. Item seventeen?
Item number seventeen is Z O N two eight three eighty-nine, move for approval, subject to-
Motion on the floor for approval of item seventeen, please, please cast your votes. And that motion has passed. Item eighteen?
I'm going to ask if, uh, Public Works have any comment on eighteen at all, before we vote? You okay with eighteen, the variance?
No.
Okay, I'll move on number eighteen, V A R two eight three nine two, a move for approval.
Motion on the floor for approval, please cast your vote.
Am I right, eighteen? Oh, excuse me.
Please cast your vote.
And that motion has passed. Item nineteen?
Uh, do you have comment there?
No, the vacation is in order.
Okay. What about perpetuating the, uh, crash gate for the fire department? Evidently was put there for a reason.
Yes, and the, the applicant is showing an emergency access route through their site to, uh, uh, Rainbow, but they'll have to meet with fire services to make sure that that works radius-wise for them, if not, we'll require an additional crash gate on the new cul-de-sac to provide continuity of access.
Yeah, I'm not worried about, I'm worried about the parcel one thirty-eight oh three six oh two zero eleven, which is at the southwest corner of the, of the bulb with the cul-de-sac we're vacating.
Right. And to provide continuity of access.
Show me again, Liz.
Are, are, you're talking about here?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. Here.
That piece.
Right.
That piece, so I didn't see that in the written conditions, though.
I, I believe this is all one project, though.
We, we, the city-
To this house.
Own the right-of-way, and we are able to retain the easements for emergency access, so if the fire department doesn't like the emergency access route provided to Rainbow and want to keep the emergency access in the Balsam Alignment, we can do that, require another crash gate on the new cul-de-sac that would provide access to the crash gate on the old cul-de-sac.
I just don't see that in the conditions.
It doesn't need to be, because-
Okay, if you're happy, I'm good.
I'll move on the V A C two eight three nine three, approval, subject conditions.
Motion on the floor for approval of item nineteen, please cast your votes. That motion has passed. There's going to be a request for Director Wheeler, is it an amendment or an addition?
Changes, changes on-
Changes before I make a motion.
On number twenty.
Yeah.
Um, first, condition number four would be changed to read that a waiver from Title Nineteen twelve oh four oh A is hereby approved to allow zero-foot wide landscape buffer along the furthest west property line only, where eight feet is required. To delete number five and to add a condition that a revised site plan showing provision of required landscaping on the east and south property lines shall be submitted prior to city council.
Does that incorporate the change on the north property line, too, on Rainbow, or on north or east?
The waivers were requested on the east, south, and west.
Those are all taken out.
It is the east and the south, if I understood, that would be corrected, and, no?
That's right, the wet, the west and the east would be corrected, the south would remain.
Well, the south is the one along the freeway.
No, the south-
Oh, that's the west.
Yeah, the south is right here.
Okay, south, okay, I got you. Make sure, uh, Miss Wheeler understands.
Well, the west is adjacent to the freeway, which, as my, was my understanding, is not able to be accommodated at this time.
Oh, no.
They were going to do it.
They're going to do it.
We're, we're going to do it.
They're going to land it.
So then that would be, I'm sorry, then-
Escape it, build a new wall, if, if the other one comes down.
Correct.
Okay, so then that, the revised condition would be that the revised site plan showing the provision of required landscaping on the east and west property lines shall be submitted prior to city council, and the change to condition four would be that the waiver from Title Nineteen to be approved would be to allow, um, that would be the, uh, I'm sorry, on the, the zero landscape-wide buffer on a portion of the south property line, extending west from the west edge of the Balsam Street Alignment to the west perimeter where eight feet is required.
Right.
And with that, I'll move for approval of S D R two eight three nine oh, subject conditions, and with the changes incorporated by Director Wheeler.
Motion on the floor on item twenty, please cast your votes. And that motion has passed.
And those matters will go forward to council on August twentieth, and we will need those revised plans as soon as possible.
Mr. Chairman, before we move forward, I just wanted to briefly explain my, my vote. I realize it's a changing area, but I'm still concerned that we're making a zone change from office to an industrial park, and I'm still not comfortable with this gentleman and his proximity to the development. Thank you.
Thank you. Items twenty-one through twenty-seven are related items. Item twenty-one, GPA two eight three nine four, applicant owner Kraft Family LP et al. From O Office to S Service Commercial on the west side of Rainbow Boulevard approximately one hundred and fifty feet north of Red Coach Avenue. Item twenty-two, Z O N two eight three nine six, from U undeveloped to, of U undeveloped Office General Plan Designation to C One Limited Commercial. Item twenty-three, V A R two eight four hundred, to allow five parking spaces where sixteen spaces are required for a proposed seventy-four thousand five hundred and forty square foot mini storage and boat RV storage facility. Item twenty-four, V A R two eight six five one, to allow a zero-foot building setback where ten feet is required along the north and south property lines, a ten-foot setback where twenty feet is required along the east property line, and a ten-foot setback where residential adjacency standards require seventy-five feet along the west property line for a proposed seventy-four thousand five hundred and forty square foot mini storage and boat RV storage facility. Item twenty-five, S U P two eight three nine eight, for a proposed boat RV storage facility. Item twenty-six, S U P two eight three nine nine, for a proposed mini storage facility. Item twenty-seven, S D R two eight three nine seven, for a proposed five hundred, or seventy-four thousand five hundred and forty square foot mini storage and boat RV storage facility with waivers to allow a zero-foot landscape buffer on the north and south property lines where eight feet is required, and a ten-foot landscape buffer on the east property line where fifteen feet is required. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, the proposed development is not compatible with the surrounding land uses and zoning districts, therefore, staff has recommended denial of the general plan amendment and rezoning applications. Furthermore, the proposed development is not compatible with adjacent development and development in the area, as, as is demonstrated by the numerous, numerous variances and waivers being requested. Therefore, staff has recommended denial of the variance in all other, all other related cases. Thank you.
Thank you. Applicant?
Good evening, Liz Sorokak, thirty-eight hundred Howard Hughes Parkway here on behalf of the applicant. I won't go through this map too much in detail again, but I did want to show it for this particular application, just for the record. Um, on this particular application, we are talking about the three parcels in the pink, and you can see their proximity to the project that was just before you in the last set of applications, so just for the record, I did want to show that map again, to show the transition of the area. And what, there's, that's better. What you have before you in this application is a mini storage, RV storage, and boat You have a GPA going from office to service commercial, um, which is appropriate along Rainbow, and you have, uh, the compatible zone change to C One that would allow for the mini storage, um, RV and boat storage. You also have special use permits for the boat and RV storage and for the mini storage facility. As far as the variances that are required for this application, the first one is related to the parking. We are providing, uh, far, five parking spaces where sixteen are required, and I know that that probably sounds like a lot of spaces that we're not providing. However, I think that the five parking spaces are adequate and appropriate for this site. Um, I looked at some other mini storages in the area, um, they have similar parking situations that seem to work out okay, and as far as, um, this facility itself, you have the five parking spaces that are located, um, right near the office where people are likely going to come in and park, do whatever business they need to do in the office, and then go to their storage facility. The drive aisles are wide enough, they're thirty feet wide, um, well, actually, I think they're, they, the drive aisle, we did change some of the landscaping, if I can just jump to that for a moment, so I believe the drive aisles are going to be a little bit smaller to provide the appropriate amount of landscaping, um, along Rainbow. We're going to do the fifteen feet of landscaping as opposed to the ten that's shown on this plan, so we lose, we lose five feet of drive aisle. But the drive aisles are wide enough that people can, um, come into the, the storage facility, parallel park along their storage site, unload their vehicle, and then leave. Um, there are also thirty-four boat and RV spots, if there's one available, someone can park there. So we feel like the, the amount of available places to park is not going to be an issue with this type of use. Um, as far as the landscaping waivers, we are asking for landscaping waivers along Rainbow, which is the east property line, um, and as I said, we, we are going to provide the fifteen feet of landscaping, um, instead of the ten that's shown on the plan. As far as the- feet of landscaping instead of the 10 that's shown on the plan. As far as the landscaping on the, the north and the south property line, if I can just take this down for a minute, the properties that are to the north and south are right along Rainbow here and here. They are undeveloped properties and likely will be developed as some type of commercial, either in conformance with the office master land use plan or some other type of commercial along Rainbow. So, we're not going to be impacting residential development to the north or south, so we don't feel that landscaping is necessary. Additionally, if we, if we do have to provide landscaping, just as a practical matter, if you put the landscaping on the outside of the wall, and then you have another piece of commercial development or some other development that goes in next to you, and they put landscaping on the outside of their wall, you create kind of an alleyway that isn't really attractive and tends to attract junk, those kind of things. If you put the landscaping on the inside of the wall, at least for our purposes, you're going to have people driving through this development, and landscaping tends to be more of an issue inside storage facilities than other types of commercial development. So we would ask, as far as the north and south landscaping, that we be permitted to omit that. As far as the, the, we did have a neighborhood meeting on this project, and the neighbors are in support of this project, with the exception of the bridle path issue. There is a bridle path that's 20-foot wide that goes on the, the west property line here. We've shown landscaping in that, and we would prefer that that be vacated. That's what Public Works has asked us to do. We are fine with that condition. The neighbors would rather that it not be vacated, and we'll leave it in your hands to determine what, what the best use of that land is for the public purpose. And additionally, with respect to the variances for the setbacks, we do have a couple places on the, the north and south property line where we have a zero lot line setback. And again, we are going to most likely be adjacent to commercial development, so we wouldn't be negatively impacting any neighbors. And as far as the, we did have a 10-foot setback on Rainbow, which will now be 15 because we're increasing the landscape buffer along Rainbow to the 15 feet required by code. So we, we will still need five feet on Rainbow. And then the 75-foot setback from residential, in this case, would be quite onerous. It would take approximately 25% of the property and make it undevelopable because we are adjacent to residential. We do have a nice landscape buffer that we're showing, and as far as the RV parking that's along here, and the RV parking that's here, we have 15-foot tall structures with a, with a metal canopy roof that will screen all of the RVs from any of the adjacent neighbors, and then also from Rainbow. And with that, I do have one neighbor here who'd like to speak on this, and he is adjacent to this property, so I request your approval, and floor is his.
Okay, thank you. We'll open the public hearing at this time. People that would like to speak for or against this item, please come forward. Please state your name and address for the record. You have about three minutes for your comments.
I'm Bob Eagle, 4686 Balsam. My property is there. Transition, that's an interesting word. The, and there was an interesting comment earlier this evening about how often do you paint your house? When I, when I bought my house, I've been there for 21 years. I've been in this valley for 42 years. And it's too late now. But transition, the transition of this residential one-acre horse property neighborhood took place not because of these people. It took place because of you people in the commission. This goes back five years with apartments, and we've been fighting and fighting and trying to save our neighborhood. We can't do it. We can't, we can't beat City Hall. I haven't been able to use my driveway for over two and a half years because of development across the street. I had a sandbag get shut because he took away all the drainage. This is, this isn't, you guys aren't sticking up for us. Here, we, the people, are getting paved over by this kind of stuff, and it's not right. Mr. Evans, thank you. You've been looking out for us. Anyway, what I would like to, I brought this up to the county commission when they were doing vacating of the bridle path on the west side of Balsam Street to accommodate apartments. That's why I want to get up, see them morning's apartments. We have mature landscaping. I have trees that are this big around alongside my house, by my pool. I'm going to have to chop those down to get access to my backyard. Is that right? Because they come in here and do this? Why does it have to affect me? They can put these things, they can put this in here, it's not going to bother me. Leave the bridle path where it's at. That's a right-of-way, and it should stay there. It should say access for us. And I think, we're all going to go commercial out there. Your comments, sir, regarding my neighbor, going to get a lot of money for his house? Well, I happen to be single, so I get a $250,000 exemption. I've been in my house 21 years. I am going to be paying a lot of income tax when I sold my house, and I plan to die in that place when I bought it. And that's what people don't take into consideration, that these are homes. These aren't houses. This isn't money. This isn't a checking account. This is, this is our homes. And, and there's 16 people, you guys, and, and, and you guys stuck up more than the city commission has. But you've just taken away our whole neighborhood. Now I have to move. I don't have a choice. I can't live in this. So what do I get, what do I get for it? Nothing. I get to pay income tax, you know? Why? Why should I? I've already, it's, it's, it's a one-acre property. It suits me just fine. And it, it doesn't make any sense, none whatsoever. But anyway, there, it seems to me they're trying to put an awful lot of building into a little spot there. Now, whether that's good or not, I don't know what you're going to do with that. But please, please do not take away the bridle path.
Thank you. Mr. Farlow?
Thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. I just want to reiterate what he says. I don't think that bridle path should be taken out unless everybody out there signs off on it. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll close the public hearing. Any comments or questions from the board? Vice Chairman Trowbridge?
I agree wholeheartedly with that, gentlemen, that we formalize what has already happened to lots of neighborhoods. I, I don't live too far from this area, and I drive by there. Like, this afternoon, I drove by to check out the neighborhood. All those parcels there, and I, don't hold me to it, but it looks like the far majority of them, while they might be residential in nature, one acre, it sure looks like the far majority of them have some kind of business operating out of their backyards. Illegal admitted, but sometimes what the zoning maps show and how the parcels are being used aren't the same thing. And so occasionally, there's actions that happen up here that are just to recognize what's already happened, just as a gradual transition. So it's, I, I, I agree with you, but still, I just had to say that sometimes we just have to acknowledge what in the world has already happened.
No more comments or questions. We'll entertain a motion on item number 21.
Before you make the motion, I just wanted to disclose for the record that Liz with her firm and Stephanie Allen, and I think Tony Celeste met with me yesterday or the day before, I can't remember which, in my office about this project, the one prior and the last one on the agenda. And substantially, what she represented here today is what was discussed in my office. Thank you.
I'd just like to ask a couple of questions.
Mr. Steinman?
I heard you say that you were going to make the, the driveways, aisleways narrower. Did I hear that correct?
That's correct, yes. Just for here.
Point, okay, yeah.
And here.
Yes.
Because we're providing five more feet of landscaping, so this will be two and a half feet less, and this will be two and a half feet less.
And that's going to work with very large RVs backing in and out?
Yes.
Okay. Because, you know, the, the parking variance of five versus 16 is an issue because when people come in there, they bring their stuff.
Right.
And they want to store it, and they need to park and unload. Where in the heck are they going to do that with these narrow aisles and everything? I, I know a solution to it. A solution to it is to take a couple of those RV spaces and make them true parking for cars. Because I think there's going to be a lot of congestion on certain days, i.e. Saturdays or whatever, in, in this particular property. I don't know why you have to have 16, but I do believe there's, there's need for four to six more spaces along those aisleways because this is, this is not going to be good. Secondly, I want to know what these structures are that you talked about that are 15-foot high. Are we talking about a 15-foot-high block wall?
No, they're going to be framed walls, like a, a stucco-framed wall with a metal roof. So if you can imagine-
So the neighbors are going to look at stucco?
So if you can imagine a garage with no door that goes down?
Yeah, I can see that on, on the side of, being inside the compound. Yes, I can see that.
Right.
I'm looking, I'm looking at what they're going to see.
On the outside?
Yes.
Sorry.
That's what I need to see.
So if you look at, for instance, this third elevation is, this is your west elevation. This will be what the neighbors are going to look at. This right here, that is the top of the RV storage. This behind it is the-
Building.
-25-foot store, two-story storage building that would be behind it, in the, in the middle of the-
But they're not going to see any of the metal of the structure. They're going to see stucco.
And then there'll be a, a roof on, I'm not sure if it's going to be a zigzag metal roof or if it's going to be a flat metal roof.
Well, I hope it's not, I hope it's not corrugated. That isn't going to look too good.
I can find out for you.
Yeah, that's what, that's what I fear. In, in the SDR, I see a condition for vacating the bridle path, but-
Yes.
Don't we have to have an application for the vacation of the bridle path?
We would have to come, yes, it would have to be vacated, I'm, yes.
And if, and if that was done, aren't we going to vacate the entire bridle path? Why would you vacate a, a third of it or a quarter of it, as opposed to all of it? I, I just don't see the need to vacate a piece. That doesn't do anything for anybody at all. And, and I don't know what that bridle path is used for now, but I certainly, I have a lot of confidence that rarely are horses being used in the bridle path. But I would like to know, are people driving in there to access properties? Is that true, sir?
That's how most of us access the back of our properties.
The back?
Yes.
Well, let's not talk from, from the audience.
Okay, and this is-
Well, I ask you, it's my fault.
This is not a fabulous picture, but this is looking north on the bridle path from the south of the prop, from the south house. So, just put this back up here for just a minute. If you're standing right here, that's where I took-
Red Coach.
That's where I took the picture from. So that's, it's looking north.
All right, that's where I was looking at it.
So, the first, the first thing that you may or may not notice is that the person who lives on the end here has their fence built across the entire bridle path.
Yeah.
So technically, no one can legally use that, legally use that public right-of-way without trespassing on the other person's property.
Legally.
What's that?
I said, physically, they cannot use it. Legally, they can.
Right, correct. Thank you. But, yes, a lot of the neighbors that live on the west side of this bridle path, they do have gates and fences that open to the bridle path, and it does look like people drive back there. There's also one person who appears to have a horse. But I guess the one thing I would point out is even if we vacate our portion, there's still going to be 10 feet remaining. I don't know if that's enough room for them.
That's the county, the county.
That would be, well, there's, half of the bridle path is on their side essentially, and half is on our side, so we would only vacate half of it. They would still have 10 feet. I don't know if that would provide access for them.
What is the need for vacation? Why?
To put a landscape buffer there instead of just having dirt and nothing.
I mean, unless we do the whole thing, this is going to continue to look like this. This is, if they're going into the back of their properties, they're going out on their properties that face on Rainbow to get around this impediment here that you show in the picture.
But you can access it from the, from the north side. You can access it.
That way, yes, but not this way.
Right.
Yeah, I, I've had trouble understanding what that bridle path is for, but he says he accesses his property from the back. Okay, that's, that's fine. All right, I, I don't think that should be a part of the SDR here. I just really don't think that, I think that should be a separate project, and it should relate to the entire length of it if it's ever going to be done. That's, that's the way I would do it.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just a couple of quick observations or questions, really. The bridle path issue, I think what you're attempting to do is to vacate the bridle path so that you can put in some of the required landscaping, I think is a fair characterization. And I appreciate that because in the absence of that, I think we're looking at block walls or, or whatever. But I also think, in the big picture, you're asking us to give you land so that you can complete your project and not use your own. I mean, that's somewhat of the, I mean, there is some consideration that you're asking for. My problem with this, other than what the gentleman spoke of earlier in his hardships, are that, you know, the plan, the general plan that we're supposed to rely on, I believe has, isn't this office-
This office, correct.
And you want to put in a mini storage. And I think the problem is that you've crammed too much in the space. I personally don't have a problem with the parking issue because I would agree with you. People who are coming in there, they're not all going to be there at the same time. I, my, my recollections are that people do park in those drive aisles, and I imagine the people in the parking spaces are there to pay their rent. So I don't have a problem with that. My problem is the landscaping, because if this, if this were invisible, other than the gentleman's objections, I wouldn't have a problem with it. But once again, I, I think we've got this thing backwards. You're asking for a general plan amendment, a change to our general plan. You're asking for a zone change. You're asking for a variance for where it requires a certain number of acreage, and you have a minimal amount. I think you're asking for the vacation of Balsam Street. You're asking for some landscape waivers. Am I right on some of these? You're asking for an awful lot.
Sure.
And, and the burden, I think, is on you to prove that there is no adverse reaction and that, and that it's appropriate. And I'm certainly not hearing it, and the gentleman who spoke, I have to agree with him wholeheartedly. The burden's on you, not on him. But I certainly, if this is going to move forward, I really would like to see some effort to put some trees in there because I think, regardless of what the people who live there say, that eventually they'd rather look at a nice tree than a block wall.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, I will definitely take that back to my client, and we'll consider that. We're going to have to submit a revised plan to show the additional landscaping on Rainbow, so I'll talk to them about that as well.
But does that landscaping have to be in the bridle path in order to accomplish it?
We would have to lose some square footage off of our buildings.
Yeah, you're going to, okay.
Right.
And, and I really think these narrowing of these, these lanes is going to cause grief of people parking that love, and I think that should be visited.
Any more questions or comments by commissioners?
In regards to item 27, it has a, the last request for waivers and a 10-foot landscape buffer on the east property line where 15 feet is required. And I hearing that you're going to 15 now, so that's not required.
Correct.
So that portion can be spricken?
Correct.
Thank you. We'll entertain a motion on item 21. We'll entertain a motion on item twenty-one if there's no more questions or comments.
I'll make the motion on twenty-one. GPA two-eight-three-nine-four, move for approval.
Motion's on the floor. Cast your vote. Want to take a motion the other way?
Item twenty-
Item twenty-one?
Item twenty-one, move for denial, per staff's recommendations.
Motion on the floor for denial of item twenty-one. A yes vote is for the denial. Please cast your vote.
And that motion does fail. There is no supermajority, and therefore, the recommendation that goes forward will be, and I'll check with the attorney, either is this for denial as-
For denial.
Thank you.
Item twenty-two, motion?
Well, where are we going now?
We're probably going to go the same way about six more times.
The vote just got turned around.
Well, I think, Mr. Lewis, we do have to vote on each one of those separately, correct?
You certainly do, and yes. The answer's yes. Yes, if I'm separately.
Motion on item twenty-two, please?
Well, I'm probably not the one to make the motion, because I'm the one who was in favor of this project with the changes I suggested, so I think he ought to take over, probably.
Move for- to follow staff's recommendation on item twenty-two for denial.
Okay. Motion on item twenty-two for denial. A yes vote is for the denial. Please cast your vote. And that motion has passed for denial.
The motion for denial has passed.
Item twenty-three, move for- to follow staff's recommendations for denial.
Item twenty-three, a yes vote is for the denial.
I'm sorry. Forgive me. Can I ask for a clarification with the DA? Can we go forward with the rest of these with a, in essence, a no vote on the general plan amendment? All the rest of them appear to be a moot point.
Mr. Chairman, if I may. Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yes, Mr. Lewis.
Yes, Commissioner. You're obligated to go forward with a vote one way or another. I understand. It is logical that with the GPA failing, that the zone change and the others would also fail, but it is possible that this commission could vote to approve some and not others. But yes, logically speaking, once a GPA fails, then it would make sense that the rest in the series would as well. But that's up to you. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does, because the one item requires a supermajority.
Yes, sir.
And the others don't.
Correct. So you could- I mean, in essence, you could have a GPA that fails, and you could have the rest that are approved, but guess what? The project can't move forward because the general plan was not approved.
I understand, and I hope that the applicant understands why I'm voting the way I am.
Item twenty-two, there's a motion for the denial. The yes vote is for the denial.
We're on twenty-three?
I'm sorry. We'll entertain a motion on item twenty-three.
Already did. I had a motion on the floor for denial to follow staff's recommendations.
Motion on item twenty-three is for denial. The yes vote is for the denial. Please cast your vote.
Item twenty-four, move to follow staff's recommendations for denial.
Item twenty-four, please cast your vote. The yes vote is for the denial. And that motion has passed.
Item twenty-five, move to follow staff's recommendations for denial.
Please cast your vote on item twenty-five. The yes vote will be for the denial.
And item twenty-six, move to follow staff's recommendations for denial.
Not like that.
That's the SUP.
Oh, that's the SUP?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Please cast your vote on item twenty-six. The yes vote is for the denial.
Commissioner Steinman?
Oh, no. I- okay. I thought you hit it.
Okay, and then I want to-
Item twenty-seven?
Get a clarification from the attorney on this. I want to move for approval, because we want to- Commissioner Steinman wants to add conditions that this board wants to have go forward to city council.
The way, if I may, the way I prepare the item for the council is I have a section that has planning commission actions that is added to the end of the staff report as you see it. And if this commission, for instance, I have all your discussion with regard to the change in the landscaping and any other potential conditions that you discuss, it goes forward in a PC action. These are the conditions, the potential conditions, that the planning commission discussed, and that's part of the staff report that goes forward to the city council. So any comments that you may have go forward in that form, even if you recommend denial of the project.
So when I talked about, I think there should be more parking spaces, that's be in there?
Yes.
And the trees in the back?
Yes.
Okay.
And the corrugated metal roofs.
And the corrugated should not- it shouldn't look corrugated to the rear.
Yes.
Okay, fine.
That goes forward in a notes section.
Okay, then on item twenty-seven, move to follow staff's recommendations for denial, noting that our comments will be forwarded to city council in written form.
Please cast your vote on item twenty-seven. A yes vote is for the denial. And that motion has passed.
So that is a four-two-one. Commissioner Truesdale abstaining on all, and all items go forward to council on August twentieth.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
All right. Items twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and thirty are related items. Item twenty-eight is GPA two-eight-five-oh-five. Applicant Central Familiar Cristiano, owner American Wheelchair Veterans and Ernest J. Fresquez Jr. from Rural Density Residential to PF Public Facility at the southeast corner of Madre Mesa Drive and Michael Way. Item twenty-nine, ZON-two-eight-five-oh-six from undeveloped Rural Density Residential, general plan designation, and RD Single Family Residential, restricted to civic. Item thirty, SDR-two-eight-five-one-seven for a proposed two-story, one-hundred-and-six-thousand-five-hundred-square-foot house of church/worship with accessory, private school, and childcare. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, staff finds the proposed general plan amendment, zoning, and site plan to be compatible and harmonious with the surrounding area and land uses, and is recommending approval.
Thank you. Applicant?
My name is Alberto Jauri, chairman, members of the planning commission. I can give you the short version, in which we prepare to accept all staff recommendations and conditions, or I can give you the long version and give you more detail if you like. At this point, I'm open for your questions or opening to your presentation, whichever you'd rather.
Sure.
Okay. So then I'll be quiet, and I'll stand back and see if there's anybody else.
Thank you. Put it in the Lord's hands. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this item? Please come forward at this time.
My name is Stephanie Myers, and I own a condo home at five-four-oh-one Bugle Way. What I've treasured most about having a place at Smoke Ranch Villas, which is right next door, is the sense of space and the silence. I'm on the street next to what was a farm. Now the owners want to develop it, and that's their right. They own the land. But we're a small community of one-story condominiums. All around us are one-story homes. All along Smoke Ranch to Rancho, across Michael Way, even across the street from the new development, it's all one-story. Three sides of this eleven acres are one-story homes. Now, how the two-story apartments got approved, and you guys must have approved them, that popped up close to Decatur, on the, I guess that would be the east side of this eleven acres, I have no idea how that got approved. There's a place where high-rise, and it's downtown and around the strip, but this development next to all our one-stories should not be permitted, and you should say no to a two-story building. Smoke Ranch Villas is an adult community. We don't have kids at Smoke Ranch Villas, and it's not because we don't like kids, but we're used to a very quiet neighborhood. We're used to silence, and it is golden. Now, we're suddenly going to have childcare and a playground. We're going to have private school and a playground. Playgrounds are very noisy affairs for a part of every day, and I think the applicant should, at the minimum, be required, if there will be playgrounds, to locate those playgrounds on another part of their site plan than directly next to Smoke Ranch Villas. So to sum up, please say no to any two-story buildings, and please require the applicant to, at a minimum, locate any playgrounds away from the Smoke Ranch Villas side of their eleven acres. We would like to maintain our quality of life. Quality of life is very important, I'm sure you'll agree, and I think that you should allow us that right. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak for or against this item? Please come forward.
My name's Steve Majors, and I'm at twenty-six forty-nine North Michael Way, just across the street from this proposed project. And I would like to say that I like this project. I think it's going to be a benefit to our neighborhood. They had a meeting. They invited all the people to come in, and I think they had a great meeting. They gave us plenty of time to air our objections, and most of the objections were based on the traffic and the variety of things that are typical, I think, but we have schools in the area and so on and so forth. I think their plan for the schooling, from the drawings I've seen for where the church is going in and stuff, I think that's really good. I'm probably the worst affected person in all of this, because I'm the only one that has a driveway directly on Michael Way, which is basically right across the street from where their driveway is proposed. And I'm hoping to work with them to not have that exactly right in the same place. But, you know, they're really- I think they've been good about all of this, and I think it should be a good project, and I look forward to having it approved. And as far as the noise and the things, I would like to say briefly about the trucks and all of the things that have been going on that are parked right across the street from us in that lot right now, that I never saw any notice that we'd have all this truck traffic and all these, the big dirt and all those things that they're doing for some of the drainage. Not that there wasn't a notice, but I just never did see one. And all of a sudden, you know, these trucks are out there four o'clock in the morning, starting up right in our ear. That- I'd much rather have the church than those trucks moving all that dirt and everything. And that's the only concern I have with their large parking lot, is that that wouldn't be allowed to have trucks and noisy types of things for the time that they don't have the church. But otherwise, I think it's a great project. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll close the public hearing. Any comments or questions?
Not unless you have them. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Commissioner Crowbridge?
Yes, I do have a question. It's kind of broad, so bear with me.
Yes.
I would really like to understand what the relationship is between yourself and the wheelchair-dvets and the Central Familiar Cristiano Aguero, which is the central, the family, the Christian family center, Eagles, and the ancillary function of a two-story school and then a daycare center. You know, it looks like the square footage with the church is considerably less than the school, but yes, the school has to be presented as an ancillary function, and where do the wheelchair-d vets come in? And how does that get up into this two-story building? And how do the wheelchair-d vets get involved in a school, daycare center? The whole relationship seems to- what are the question and explanation?
Let me try to answer your questions. What is called American Wheelchair Veteran Association is the current owner of the property. We are purchasing the property from them. No internal relationship whatsoever. There is another parcel of land at the very corner of Microwave and Madre Mesa, which is also part of the eleven acres or so, and we already own that land. That land is already purchased and owned by the Christian church. Now, questions that the owners in the neighborhood, and we did have two meetings with them, which they came, what kind of a church is this? And so we answered, this is a Christian church. Well, they also asked, what kind of a Christian church is this? And our answer is, it's a non-denominational Christian church. So any more detail than that, I would have to pass on to the pastor to answer any more questions as far as what kind of church it is. As far as the school, that's also a question that the neighbors raise. The intent for us is to build a place of worship, not to build a church. The amenity of the childcare and private school, it's just an amenity, is less than seven percent of the building.
Less than seven percent of the building?
Less than seven percent of the facility, correct. And the- I can break down the amount of kids expected. I can break down the daycare, the elementary kids, expected at the maximum.
How big is the church then? Because the school is presented as being one-thousand-six-hundred square feet. One thousand, one thousand, I'm sorry, one-hundred-and-six-thousand-five-hundred square feet of school.
No, this is-
And was it seven percent?
Right. The whole facility is presented to be one-hundred-and-six-thousand square feet.
Not the school, like it says?
No. The whole facility is a building.
That's exactly where I got it. And it's supposed to be one-hundred-and-ten to one-hundred-and-eighteen students in the school.
Correct.
And thirty, twenty-five to thirty in the preschool.
It's a maximum, as we hope to grow. At the moment, the church's members is somewhere around fifteen-hundred, so they're building a facility large enough that they help to grow into it. So at the same thing with the childcare, it would be at the maximum of growing into that, but the intent is not to build a school. The intent is to build a place of worship.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Truesdale?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. I understand where this is located. I understand, I appreciate the neighbors coming out and speaking that they've been notified here, but I just want to put this in perspective, or at least so everybody understands. We had an application a few weeks ago for a small office complex on Michael Way at Lake Mead, a street that's designed to handle significant traffic, and the outcry was phenomenal with regards to traffic and what that was going to do to those, the ranch estate lots, the half-acre lots. And I appreciated the neighbors and what they, you know, whether I agree with everything they raised at the time. This facility you're planning here is as big as a Target store, multi-levels. The seating capacity is phenomenal, and the parking lot here is on par with a Walmart. I don't believe that Madre Mesa to the west, Roberta to the east, are appropriate streets to carry this amount of traffic in what are unimproved residential ranch estates. I think that's where I have a problem here. I mean, we- Michael Way is not a arterial street. I mean, it's a small, it's a sixty-foot street or eighty-feet, ninety-feet. But we've got ranch estates north of here. I'm very concerned that your success may be the, an unrealistic impact on the residents adjacent to this, and that gives me great concern, because if, how many services do you hold?
Well, and this is what I wanted to address and maybe satisfy some of your concerns. Primarily, a church, especially in this church, is holding their services on Sundays and Tuesdays. Sundays being, obviously, the majority of the day. Throughout the week, the church parking lot would be primarily sit vacant, other than the childcare facility that would hold, and we addressed that it's a small amount. So I'm a neighbor to someplace. I live behind a church, and it has created to our neighborhood nothing but an amenity. So we're hoping that this would create an amenity to the neighborhood, and that's why we had plenty of support. We had twenty-five letters in support. We met with the neighbors twice, not once. But to my surprise, a neighbor came today here. I was expecting not. So there is one neighbor that we never had a chance to speak to, but we were welcome to speak if that neighbor would have come to us. So we believe that this will not be such a great an impact in traffic, as it's not a seven-day, every-day- a seven-day, every-day type of operation, if you would think that way.
And, understand, I do appreciate this is not every day of the week. But on Sundays and Tuesdays, this will be like a sports arena, the amount of traffic that will be coming and going on multiple services through these residential neighborhoods. And if you're successful, based on your seating requirement, you will exceed the parking provided, which will spill into that neighborhood. I believe churches can be an amenity of the neighborhood, but I think they have to be in scale with the neighborhood. And to me, when a, when any use becomes a regional draw, it puts an undue burden on the neighborhood that it sits within. And that, for that reason, I have a concern, and, you know, depending on the comments of the other commissioners, I just have a real problem supporting the magnitude of what's being presented here.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Evans?
Yeah, Commissioner Truesdale, you bring up some interesting points. Because originally, I was somewhat supportive of this in that I, and I think in terms of my neighborhood, I live across from what used to be a Jewish temple and adjacent to what is a pretty substantial Methodist church. And up the street on the other side of Maryland Parkway is a former LDS church, or an LDS church that literally borders, all of them literally border residential neighborhoods. And I would agree with you, sir. They've been great amenities. They've been, they've anchored the neighborhoods, and they've provided a lot of places for the community, you know, where they can use for their theaters, their multipurpose rooms, their gymnasiums, et cetera. But the scale of this is what Commissioner Truesdale brings to mind, and I would have to echo that. It does seem large, and I'd like to ensure that the traffic and the neighbors who live around here don't have any grief. The only interesting thing about this is if it were a SUP, we'd have an opportunity to review it if it were approved within a period of time, a year or two. Director Wheeler, is that not possible on an SDR and a zone matter? Or is that something that, I mean, obviously, if it's built, we can't come back and say, whoops, you know, there's a problem. And I will say one final thing, that what used to be a church that was adjacent to where I live, or across the street, is now a charter school. And they've done a great job in fixing it up. But, the big problem is that now, since it's used five and six days a week, if not seven, is the garbage pickup. The garbage people are not supposed to come after a certain hour, but usually between 11:30 and 4:00 a.m. You hear the big dumpsters, and they, the big trucks, and they dump the dumpsters, and it sounds like thunder. And since you're operating a school, I'm wondering if that would be an issue too, because of your proximity to neighbors. And the owners of the property where I'm talking about, that's now a school, have attempted to work with Republic, from what I'm told over and over again. And I can tell you, as recent as night before last, at 3:30 in the morning, I get woken up. And I live a fair distance from there. So, I think there are issues on both sides of this in terms of scale, and yet, that it would seem to be appropriate for the neighborhood. I just would have to agree with Commissioner Truesdale about the size.
Any more comments from the board?
Yes.
Commissioner Steinman.
Thank you. What kind of business is carrying on right now on that property?
Right now, it's vacant. The wheelchair association, I believe, has left. And so, you have nothing but vacant homes and vacant structures there with an empty pool.
What are those 15 to 25 trucks doing there?
I don't know. Those don't belong to us, and we have no control of the property to that matter.
Well, I don't think they're working on the site. That's...
They probably...
Somebody's rented it out.
Maybe a neighbor who has trucks.
No, I think it's a business going on there. Somebody's parking trucks, and I don't think it's right for the neighbors for that. I'm just telling that because I think code enforcement...
We did send a letter to the current owner indicating that there was some concern for us to notice some of that activity there, because we are not part of that, and they didn't ask us whether they can establish that.
Well, I'm just asking staff to send code enforcement out there to find out what's going on, because something's going on.
I called the...
Hold on a minute.
I'm sorry.
Hold on. Commissioner Steinman, I'm going to let the neighbor who probably...
Knows.
Knows, address that. Go right ahead.
Steve Majors at 2649 North Michael. And I had called the city zoning and was told that these are people that are working on the drainage ditch that's down from Madre Mesa, and it's a little further north on Michael. And they're working on that drainage going off towards Rainbow, and they were allowed to park there. And these are city authorized trucks that are there.
Whoa. I've seen that before, and I think it's just, they probably have an agreement for leasing that for parking of them, so they don't have to bring them out every day.
Yeah, I don't know, but I know they're awfully noisy.
That's interesting, they do that on rural density.
Commissioner Steinman, any more questions?
No. I've got one remaining question.
Mr. Crowbridge?
And that is, do you have a better rendering that shows where the green space is, or the play area in association with the school and the playground?
I saw a slide in your, in your computer that just came out, that I think they gave us a landscaping slide. I didn't bring my landscaping plan for that. There's one. And if I can point out my map here, my finger, so we can bring it back to this area.
Well, we can't see where you're pointing.
Well, if you, if you look at it, right now, you see the building in Madre Mesa to the north.
Correct.
If you would think the northeast of the building, do you see that little corner there? The northeast of the building?
Yes.
That would be it.
That little corner?
That little corner. Nothing but a, kind of like a small jungle gym for kids, very small.
Isn't there a square footage requirement based on per student associated with preschool?
Whichever, whichever is the requirement, we will meet that requirement. We didn't ask for any variances on parking, landscaping, or any of that matter.
But if, but if you have to add additional green space to make the state requirement, it would cost your parking space.
And we would have to sacrifice the building and...
Okay, as long as we're on the record recognizing that, because I think, I think you're short.
On parking? On the play area?
Probably a fairly significant amount.
We gladly work with city staff and meet those people.
State people, okay. Yeah, they would do the licensing of the preschool.
We gladly do that.
Seeing no more questions on item 28 through 30, I'll entertain a motion on item 28.
I'll make the motion. In regards to item number 28, general plan amendment 28505, make a recommendation for approval, subvert all staff conditions.
Motion on the floor for approval of item 28, please cast your vote. And that motion has passed. Item 29.
Regards to item number 29, zoning 28506, make a recommendation for approval, subvert all staff conditions.
Motion on the floor for approval of item 29, please cast your vote. And that motion has passed. Item 30.
Site development review 28517, make a recommendation for approval, subvert all staff conditions.
Item on the floor for approval of item 30, subvert all staff recommendation condition, please cast your vote. And that motion has passed as well.
All matters go forward to the city council on August 20th.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Items 31 through 35 are related items. GPA 28510, applicant owner Field Development LLC from Office to Service Commercial at 3920 Leon Avenue. Item 32, ZON 28511, from O Office to C1 Limited Commercial. Item 33, VAR 28514, to allow a 10.83-foot rear yard side back where 20 feet is required for proposed commercial building. Item 34, SUP 28513, for a building maintenance services and sales. Item 35, SDR 28512, for a proposed 4,500-square-foot building, maintenance service and sales facility, and an existing 6,120-square-foot office with waivers to allow a zero-foot landscape buffer along portions of the north, south, and west perimeters where eight foot is required. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, in regards to the general plan amendment, staff finds that the requested application is not compatible or harmonious with the surrounding properties. The O Office acts as a buffer from the residential to the east, to the commercial to the west. In regards to the variance in the site plan, staff is recommending denial of those applications as the site plan is overbuilt by, indicated by the variance for the setback and the multiple waivers. And in regards to the site special use permit, staff finds that that's not a compatible use with the surrounding neighborhood, and is recommending denial.
Thank you. Applicant?
Good evening. Alan Hendrickson, representing the applicant, 5715 West Alexander. The building here, that's in question, the new building here, is actually tucked, surrounded by, we actually, Field Development here has, going to the north, the next two, there's a parcel here, 1.25-acre parcel here, and another 1.25-acre parcel here, both buildings that we've constructed. This one we're breaking ground on probably next week. And we actually set this up in this manner, because the building's actually tucked, Leon is the main street over here, the building's actually tucked in behind the existing two-story building, and surrounded by C2 to the west. So, the purpose, the purpose of this is for some, some inside storage for the tenant that's in the building that's actually buying it. He's actually here tonight, he'll speak in a minute. But we actually did meet with the, with NARA, the neighborhood, and NARA was actually in favor of, in favor of the change. There were some questions and some concerns from NARA as to like, what actually could be put in there for, you know, for a C1 use. They were, you know, could somebody come in and put a restaurant? Is somebody going to put in the, you know, adult bookstore? Common concerns for the homeowners. But we handled all of those things, and they actually, they actually voted at the end of the evening, and they were in favor of it. So, one of the things that came up is, and I don't know how this could be crafted, but NARA did request if there was some way that we could get some of the uses that could be allotted for in C1 and some sort of deed restriction, I don't know how that could be crafted, that those be, those be listed or enumerated in the deeds, so those certain things could never go in there in the future. Their fear was something in the future coming up, not what's coming in there now. Yeah.
Are you finished?
I am.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience would like to speak for or against this item? Please come forward.
One second, Chairman, as the public comes up. Staff did have revised staff reports for item number 34 and 35, which are part of your backup. And the, yeah, the cream-colored sheets here, we do have a revised staff report to reflect the change in the setback to 10 feet, which is what it reflects on the site plan. 10 feet, 10 inches? It reflects a 10-foot, 10-inch setback in the rear.
Not a 10.83?
Yeah, that's the equivalent. 10.83 is 10 feet, 10 inches.
Thank you. Mr. Farlow?
Thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. I understand the zero landscape buffer on the north side because they're going to develop that. But I'd like to know a little bit more about the waivers on those landscape buffers on the surrounding edges of the property.
Okay, we'll try to get answers for you. Seeing no one else, we'll close the public hearing. Would you like to address the question? Applicant, would you like to address the landscape?
Yeah, I'll give it a shot. I'll give it a shot if I understand him correctly. If you look at the building, the building being so close to the existing two-story building right here, also has a block wall on the north end of it, and then an open area right here, which is going to have an actual block wall put up in front of it, and a block wall here with an alleyway. So, I think if what he's, what he's referring to is the rest of the landscape around the perimeter of the building, it's pretty much insulated. There's a block wall in another building on three sides of it, and then an alley on the west end. So, I don't know if that answers his question, but...
Thank you. Comments or questions from the commissioners?
For the applicant, what's planned on the open lot to the, I guess, south of this building? Is that, you're putting up block walls, is that like fence storage, yard storage?
And when you say to the south, you mean down here?
On your site.
On the site, yeah. Well, what's going to be done is that the alleyway is here, the alleyway is here, and there's going to be a gate here with the landscape and a gate in the front, and then this area right here is going to be an ingress and an egress for trucks. It's electrical company, it's electrical contractor, and this will be just open space.
So, that's going to be yard storage?
Correct.
So, but, I mean, I just want to understand, you're asking C1 zoning to have yard storage, and I don't know if that's acceptable. Because we...
Gentlemen, outside storage in C1?
The outside storage is part of the special use permit and must be screened from adjacent properties and streets. So it is permitted as part of the special use permit for the building maintenance service and sales yard.
So that application is part of what's before you?
That's part of what's before you.
Okay.
And if I may?
We're putting really a quasi-industrial use in this O Office area.
Quasi? Yeah, you could say quasi.
And this project's kind of whittled away in multiple layers over the last several years.
Which project is that?
The two blocks, or two lots to the north, and we've kind of come in with a little bit each time.
Yeah, if you recall, that we were originally proposing a batting cages, an indoor batting cages on that site right there, and then we've dropped and aborted that when the, one of our partner's kids went on to college, and it was no longer viable for him. But we, he did, actually, yeah. He's going to Reno. So, you know, if both of those projects are now, you know, well underway, and the thing that makes this, I mean, aesthetically, it's going to actually improve that area in the back. And it's almost, it's almost hardly visible for anybody to even see that, because it's surrounded, it's got a block wall on the north, it's got a two-story building over top of it facing Leon on the east, and there's nothing coming directly here to the south. And this is all C2 in this direction.
Under that aesthetic argument, I could put this light industrial use outside the back of the mayor's house in Scotch 80s, and no one would see it. That doesn't make it work. It's still, to me, we've got O on both sides of this, we've got desert rural. This just doesn't fit here. I just have a concern that we're, we're just changing this area without, and I, this is one of the few things, few items I've seen, just has come into spot zoning, and I just don't think this is going to be an improvement to the neighborhood over time.
If I may, you'd start off your presentation with the comment that you had spoken with the people at NARA, and they had...
NARA, yeah.
They had essentially supported the project, but mentioned C1 as, and they wanted to know the kinds of things that would be permitted under C1. What are you asking for?
Well, the concern from NARA, and we've, you know, we've been interacting with them for, you know, three or four years now, the concern from NARA is not what's happening with the, with the face of this building and what's coming on for the new construction. They were okay with that. The concern was, if Century Electric and Brian Poole move out down the road, what's the potential, who could possibly come in there under a C1 use? And what would be the, what would be the worst possible scenario of what could happen? Not with us doing it, but with somebody that came in down the road. That was their concern. So we had printed out a list of things that were permissible uses under C1, and that satiated most of the concerns.
Could that satisfy them?
Yeah, and that was, that's what had it...
Because if they get too far adrift, they'd have to come on and ask, come in and ask for a special use permit.
Indeed.
And that would be the control.
Indeed, indeed.
All right, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you.
Commissioner Steinman and Commissioner Dunne.
Who's the, who's the tenant on that space now?
This is Brian Poole from Century Electric. He's the tenant.
If you put up a building, what are you going to do to make one of the most unsightly lots I've ever seen in my life come alive? That is the worst thing I have ever seen. And I didn't have to climb the fence to see it. And I, you know, if that's the way it's going to be with a building there too, this is, this just can't be. You cannot do that to that neighborhood. That is absolute mess. And I need you to talk... That is absolute mess, and I need you to talk about it and tell me what you're gonna do about it.
Okay.
Name and address for the record, please.
6208 Red Pine Court, also Reg. 130, Brian Poole.
Thank you. Continue.
A lot of the pictures that you're seeing come up on the screen is what's existing. There are fenced, there are temporary fences with a green screen. What I'm planning on is to remove the screening. Most of the materials that you see in those pictures are not owned by Century Electric, they're parcels of land that has been divisioned or separated and is being leased to some of the other tenants in the building. When I purchase the building, I will more than likely take over all the property, and I will be putting over in this area here, the 4,500 square foot building, which is a storage place for electrical materials. There won't be, you know, one of the concerns of NARA was the number of vehicles that would be driving in and out of the neighborhood. Most of my vehicles, the employees take home and they go directly out to the job sites from home. I do have one delivery truck that comes to the office and delivers out to the job sites every day. This area over here would be for outside storage. Some of the stuff that you see in those pictures is, does belong to Century Electric, which would remain in this area, but it would have the buffer from the block walls that would be put up around, across the alleyway, so that they wouldn't be seen.
Well, you know, what I say is not, I'm not just talking, I mean, it's a mess, and you know it's a mess.
I agree.
And we need some way to be checking that after you build this building, you're gonna keep it nice. I don't care about trucks, I don't care about trucks in and out, that'd bother me less. It's what the visual impact is in making this what looks like a junkyard right now, okay? It needs to be cleaned up, and we need to have a control some way so that we can visit this thing in a year and say, oh, he's doing a great job there, he really did clean up the act. So, I think if you have a building, and you should be able to do a lot better with this whole thing, I believe that.
Absolutely.
But I just want you to know, I think you gotta work hard at this.
I agree.
Let me ask another question then, what type of fencing are you proposing?
The block walls.
The block walls rather than this green over the chain link fence, thank you.
That's right. And I also wanted to mention that there is going to be a fence, there's gonna be a fence on this side of the property and on this side of the property, so that the, so any vehicles come in, you know, there's a gate, I should say, that this property can be entered in off of the alleyway, which is on the west end of the property, or from this direction, which these gates would be closed at night or when it's not in operation over the weekend.
There is an elevation, there is an elevation picture as well.
Well, we'll add a condition on the S U P, is that all right?
Yes, sir.
You already got it written? Okay.
Mr. Hendrickson, you and Mr. Field, you've been in the development game for a couple of years, right?
Indeed.
You know what, you know you shouldn't be letting this, that type of development and outside storage, you know, you know that's not allowed on an office development, you know that. You're doing it to the north, you're doing it to the south, so shame on both of you for guys for letting this happen. But, to let the other commissioners know what's going on in this area, Martinez Masonry runs their yard out of the parcels south of here, so there's outside storage and heavy equipment moving in and out on a daily basis. Martinez Masonry leaves there at 6:00 a.m. every morning, because I run into them every morning, and I'm going to the office too. So, I don't know how the rest of you guys are gonna vote, but if this thing were to go forward, I've got some conditions that I wanna place on the, on the S U P, is that where I would put it, Margot?
Yes, with regard to the use.
Yeah, and it's gonna be decorative block walls, it's going on all four sides, or all, yeah, all four sides of your outside storage, it's gonna have a decorative cap, we're gonna put in the required number of trees, we're gonna retrofit this site so that it meets current code. I think the best way to handle this honestly is to let the new building go up and impose a bunch of restrictions on this so that it's built right. There are excess in parking, so we're gonna have the required number of parking fingers in the interior parking area since you are fat on parking. So, there are ways to correct it, and I think if it does go forward, I wanna add those conditions on the S U P, so I'm gonna step back and kinda see what, see what a motion's made on this.
Where, because you're familiar with the area, where is the other contractor? Just tell me, is it?
It's south.
South?
Yeah. Martinez Masonry owns the two parcels to the south.
Okay, so they're zoned O also.
One's zoned C2 and one is zoned Office.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, comments?
Yes, can we just have the applicant point out what Commissioner Dunham was talking about there for the record? Martinez Landscaping is over here. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any more questions or comments?
Yeah, I do. This picture of all of this equipment, is that on Martinez Masonry's property?
No, it's not, it's on this parcel.
Okay, so it's all functioning illegally today?
Correct.
And this is not something that just showed up a week ago?
Correct.
So, are you here because you were cited, or are you here because you had a vision that this needs to be corrected for a change, or is it just, I mean, I'm just concerned that we've, everything we've been concerned about happening is this interior to this neighborhood has gone on and we're talking like we're gonna ratify it and make it wonderful. There, it's desert rural directly across the street, I don't understand why we're having this conversation to make this appropriate, because I don't think this is gonna go away. I think all your good promises, we will still have this kinda mess out here, and that really concerns me.
Can I respond to that?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, that is a legitimate concern, so the first thing I'll address is the transition of that space, is there was a multiple tenants, there was like six, the building itself, the freestanding building existing now is a little over 6,000 square feet, and it kinda got to where there's a lot of small, you know, pool company, landscape company, and the west end of that, which is this yard that you're looking at, kind of just became of an area where things kinda started getting put in, things started getting put out in the yard, and, you know, we did not manage it, we didn't manage it properly. Next thing you know, there's like piles of rocks and there's landscaping material and pool supplies, and when we got into the conversation with Brian about buying the building, it was kind of, you know, we were in escrow, and there's a transition that can take place that actually remedies that problem, I mean, on a full-time, permanent basis, which is get all of that stuff out there from all the smaller tenants, because they're all on month-to-month leases. Brian comes in and puts in this 4,500 square foot building, surrounds it with a black wall, that's block wall that's decorative, and then all of that is handled, it's completely done and cleaned up. The reason that that stuff's all sporadic and spread out like that is because it's probably three or four different small tenants. So, it's a legitimate, right-on concern, and I think it will be handled with what we're proposing. You have one tenant instead of multiple out there.
I think that's, I think you expressed the concerns that NARA raised, what happens if Mr. Poole doesn't occupy the entire building, starts subleasing it? This is a slippery slope on this particular parcel where you've got desert rural adjacent to it, and if, there's no guarantee that the market, the way it currently is, that electric contractor's gonna grow and use all of this, we could wind up with multiple subcontractors or other users, and we just don't have a good track record here, but you're asking us to make it better, or make it approved in this neighborhood with Office north of it, I just don't see this as, and I'm really trying to figure out how to make this development work, but the outside storage, the industrial character of the yard space, I just think we're making a big mistake right against that desert rural.
Yeah. Well, if you look at the existing condition that it's in right now, there's, you know, the one option that plays out is everything gets moved off there, which has to be, that has to be done, everything gets removed off there, the outside storage from all the other small tenants, and then you're left with like a little dirt patch sitting back there that's not surrounded by the, doesn't have any decorative rock around it. So, that would be one way that that could play out, and then there'll be multiple tenants that are in the place that have to find some other storage somewhere else, or they'll move out and relocate. If the issue is, is that that outside storage and that mess out there of all the junk laying out in the yard gets remedied, it's remedied by one owner in the building with the, you know, the block wall surrounding it, and then that's actually paved in there and the area actually aesthetically gets cleaned up. So, I think what it is that we're proposing here handles that. Could Brian go out of business and, you know, that's all, that's all plausible and possible, but even the worst-case scenario, if it ran down the road and there were other tenants, there's still gonna be that inside storage there where they could put the stuff instead of, you know, putting it where it's at in its current condition.
I'm not gonna debate this anymore, but you've got Office north of you, you've got Office south of you, and you're asking us to approve this?
I don't think it's Office south, but...
According to the map I'm looking at, it's...
Is it Office south?
Yeah. So, that is, with desert rural across the street, this is the most classic form of spot zoning argument, and I just don't see your argument of holding water, because you're asking us to, in essence, start the transition of all of that Office to service commercial with outside yard storage, because that's the kind of applications that will continue to come in on these properties. I guarantee that's what we'll see on the lot south of you. So, and I, if that's what this commission seems fit to approve, that's fine, I can't support that.
Thank you. Any more questions or comments? Seeing none, we entertain a motion on item 31.
I'd like to make a motion to follow staff's recommendation for denial on GPA 28510.
Motion for denial is on the floor, item 31, please cast your vote. And that motion has been approved. Item 32?
I'd like to also make the motion to follow staff's recommendation for denial of the zone 28511.
Please cast your vote on item 32, a yes vote is for the denial. Item 33?
Following with number 33, to also follow staff's recommendation for denial of variance 28514.
Motion on the floor for item 33, a yes vote is for the denial, please cast your And that motion for denial has passed. Item 34?
To follow the motion again, of staff's recommendation of S U P 28513 for denial.
Motion on the floor for denial, a yes vote is for the denial.
And while we're talking about, let's see, 34 is the special use permit, I'm sorry, I'm getting lost here.
That is correct. You wanna add some?
No, I just wanna comment on 35, thank you.
Okay. Item 34, please cast your vote, the yes vote is for the denial. And that motion has passed. Item 35?
Again, to follow staff's recommends, recommends denial for S D R 28512 and S U P 28513 for denial.
There's a motion for denial, Commissioner Dunham?
And just to put this on the record, there were multiple conditions as if approved, one of them being item five, that said an exception to Title 19, da-da-da-da, to allow 22 trees in the perimeter landscape buffers, I would like to modify that condition if going to city council, that that be the 34 trees, so that the site complies with open space requirements and the number of trees and planter islands. I would also like to mention that any, the new proposed interior block wall, which divides the parking and the outside storage, would be eight-foot decorative block wall with wrought iron gates. That same condition would be for the west wall along the alley, and that decorative block wall would be smooth, would contain a smooth cast concrete decorative cap of a pyramid shape, and that I know I can't place this on any parcels that are not part of the application, but to remove all of the existing outside storage and fences adjacent to these parcels within 30 days. That's a mess, guys.
If I may?
So...
In your staff report, we show the field check observations, and many of the issues that Commissioner Dunham just spoke about, everything from the gates to the block wall without the cap, to the outside storage, to the landscaping and parking area, all of these issues were observed in the field check for the application and are before code enforcement at this time.
And if I may, while we're getting things on the record, I would like to indicate that while the map that's being shown is correct, with the parcels to the north and to the immediate south of this particular parcel in question are zoned as Office, the fact of the matter is that the one to the south is being used in a similar fashion as this parcel is being requested and requested for S C. So, if you look at all that in conjunction, it appears as though all but two lots to the west of Leon, between Rancho and Leon, are in fact either S C or general commercial, except for the two northernmost lots which are O. So, just, that's why I keep voting against it and support the project.
Thank you. There is a motion on the floor for denial of item 35, following staff's recommendation, please cast your vote, the yes vote will be for the denial. And that motion has passed.
And all matters go forward to the council on August 20th.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. Items 39, 40, and 41 are related items. Item 39, M O D 28530, applicant owner Board of Regents of the Nevada System of Higher Education on behalf of the University of Nevada, Las Vegas, from M D 1 Medical Support to M D 2 Major Medical and Special Land Use Designation at 1,001 Shadow Lane. Item 40, V A C 28532, to vacate a portion of Hastings Avenue generally located west of Hastings Avenue in Desert Lane. Item 41, S D R 28531, for proposed 66,200 square foot university education and administration building addition to an existing university campus. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, before the staff's report, if I'm not mistaken, this is the site of the old N I C building that my late pop, Blackie Evans, was substantially involved in creating along with the Jean Hannah Clark Rehabilitation Center. But aside from that, even though I have an emotional attachment, I note that the applicant is the State of Nevada Public Works Board, and since my employer is the State of Nevada, I'll be abstaining on these matters. Thank you.
Thank you. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, the proposed development is adjacent to similar medical and educational type uses and is compatible with the development in the area, therefore, staff is recommending approval. Furthermore, staff has the following condition, changes to S D R 28531 and has submitted the full language to the clerk. Condition number two, staff is deleting a building permit issued for the principal building and replacing it with civil improvement plans have been issued for the building addition. Condition number four, staff is deleting the language, the time, the time application is made for building permit and replacing it with, or at the same time application is made for civil improvements. Condition number five, staff is deleting a building permit and replacing it with civil improvement plans. Condition number six, staff is deleting, a certificate of occupancy will not be issued or final inspection will not be approved and replacing it with, the civil improvement bond will not be released. In addition, the Department of Public Works has a condition change as well. Thank you.
Yes, and that condition...
Go ahead and read it in, Bart.
Thank you. It would follow similar vein, we would recommend replacing issuance of any building or grading permits with the submission of civil construction drawings.
Thank you.
In condition number 21 of item number 41.
21 of 41. Okay. Applicant?
Yeah, good evening Chairman and members of the commission, my name is Sonny Kamath, I'm an architect and project manager for State of Nevada Public Works Board, my address is 1830 East Sahara Avenue, Las Vegas 89104. This is a, this is a State of Nevada project for Nevada System of Higher Education. The state wants to cooperate and be a good neighbor with the City of Las Vegas. We have no objections to staff's recommendations. We do look forward to your favorable approval of the applications in front of you. With me, I have... With me, I have Steve Carpenter from Carpenter Sellers Architects. Would just like to take a minute or two, I know it's been a long evening, just a minute or two, just to explain briefly this public facility that's in front of you. So, thank you.
You've already got an approval, so don't wiggle your way, don't talk your way out of it.
Say a few words. My name's Steve Carpenter. I'm at 1919 South Jones, Suite C, 89146. What you have here is the site plan, and our building that we're looking at for the new building would be a four-story building right here. The existing building, A, is the old NIC building that is currently the dental school. The newest building on campus is Building D, which was just completed last year, and Building B, which is the old Gene Hannah Clark Rehabilitation Center, is actually kind of, our building nestles in that, and then it fronts upon this quad area here that is intended to be the social center for the campus. The building itself is a four-story building with curtain wall glazing and panelized wall system. It's intended to be a used for the University of Nevada, Las Vegas Nursing School, and the Nevada School of Medicine in these, in the building for classrooms, admin, and laboratory as well. Any other questions?
No. That's it. Very good.
Okay.
Do you'd like to try to talk them out of it?
You're going to have to listen to this. Coming up against something is as good. It sounds pretty tough. I have a request, Mr. Chairman.
Did the applicant?
No.
Okay. Hold on one moment. Let me open the public hearing. Anybody that'd like to speak for or against this item, please come forward. Please state your name and address for the record.
Earl Hawley, 2016 Hamilton Lane.
Go ahead, Mr. Hawley.
Mr. Chairman, I have an unusual request to make. I was going to write a letter objecting to the project and get it in timely, but an emergency occurred in my family, and I only got the chance to finish it today. Can I pass this forward for distribution to the--
You surely can. You can also submit a copy to the clerk, which will be added to the record. Just hand it over to the young lady.
There is one, I think, in there for the clerk already.
Thank you very much.
Let me give you an executive summary now.
Very good.
Okay. I am very familiar with this neighborhood. I was raised there. And I have two pieces of property that I have an interest in on Desert Lane between Charleston and Hastings. And I don't know whether you've been through, been down Desert Lane lately, but I can tell you this, that the traffic conditions that are occurring at Charleston and Martin Luther King have caused that area to disintegrate rapidly lately. McDonald's executive offices or administrative offices have recently moved out of there where if you're traveling north on Desert Lane, when you come to Hastings, there's a building that's been boarded up, and it was for sale for a long, long period of time. Properties in the area are just not selling because of the deterioration, and the whole of the area is beginning to look bad. The new project comes directly up against the buildings on the west side of Desert Lane between Hastings and Charleston. That has a six-foot fence between the properties of the university and the Desert Lane properties. That six-foot fence, when the structure, four stories high, is, it is proposed, absolutely eradicates any privacy in the backyard between the people. Six-foot fence isn't going to make it there. That is a minor aspect of what I want to talk about. The road conditions are so bad in that area that I have seen people who have endeavored to get off in Desert Lane have to drive clear down to Alta in order to get on Martin Luther King, in order to go back to this, to the south. As you may recall, Project Neon has a flyover that comes proposed there, but the delay in getting Project Neon has only allowed the traffic to communicate. Bottom line is, my last remark, I've taken a look at that, and for whatever it is, I suggest to you people inverse condemnation is in the making right now on Desert Lane in between Hastings and Martin Luther, or Charleston.
Charleston.
That's all I have, sir.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak on this item?
Yes, thank you. Todd Parlow, 240 North 19th Street. Gene Hannah Clark probably saved my life after TBI, and shame on this state for getting rid of the Gene Hannah Clark Center. Shame on them. Blackie Evans held this university, or the legislature's feet to the fire to put in one of the best therapy pools in the world in that Gene Hannah Clark, and this state went up and sold it off to that, now it's ECOG insurance employer, employers insurance in Nevada, whatever. I would like to know, these people to know, that whatever they do, if they have any heart at all, they should have some way of putting that pool therapy facility back in the, into use. Thank you, Rick.
Thank you. Mr. Parlow, sounds like you may want to get the midnight to Carson City. We'll close the public hearing. Any more comments or questions from the board? Applicant, any comments?
Sunny Kamath, State of Nevada Public Works. We have no comments at this point. You know, just want to mention that we have provided all the setbacks required, you know, from the, from the single-family homes is more than enough, more than what the city required setback is. And as far as the pool comment is concerned, you know, this is a university project, and I don't think that's a relevant comment, and I cannot offer any further comments on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Comments, questions from the board? If not, we'll entertain a motion on item 39.
Mr. Chairman, one comment, then I'll make a motion. I think this facility is greatly needed. It's an incredible facility, and I think the building plan, as it integrates into the existing buildings, is appropriate for this area. I do appreciate the comments Mr. Hawley made, because I believe Desert Lane has been impacted, but I don't believe that is this project's issue. I think that is more the Project Neon and other traffic, so I will make a motion for approval of this project, subject to all staff's conditions.
Motion on the floor for approval of item 39. Please cast your vote. That motion has passed, showing Commissioner Evans abstaining. Item 40.
Mr. Chairman, on item 40, motions for approval, subject to all staff's recommendations.
Motion on the floor for approval of item 40. Please cast your vote. And that motion has passed, with Commissioner Evans abstaining. Item 41.
Mr. Chairman, with regards to item 41, motions for approval, subject to all staff's conditions as amended by staff.
Both Public Works and I think Staff read in items 2, 4, 5, 6, and Public Works amendment to item number 21. Okay? Please cast your vote. That motion has passed.
All matters go forward to council on August 20th.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
You're welcome. Item 42, WVR 28533, applicant owner TBG Development 1 LLC, to allow a zero-foot landscaping buffer along a 37.5-foot portion and to allow a 1.5-foot landscaping buffer on a 30-foot portion of the west property line where eight feet is required at 7605 Grand Teton Drive. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, staff cannot make a finding for recommendation of approval, as the waivers indicates that the site is being overbuilt and is recommending denial.
Thank you. Applicant?
Yes, Bruce Isaacson for TBG Development, 11920 Southern Islands Parkway, Las Vegas. I'll try to keep my comments brief. We're building a Maryhill Schools, a Nobel Learning Community's daycare facility oriented to children on this site. It is in, services three, three types, infants, children one to two years old, and children three to five years old. We think the site is a benefit to the community, and we've attempted to bring a quality operator for the community in a, in a facility that the children can use and enjoy. And just one comment on the, on the status of it. The building is up, it's been framed, and it should be complete and ready to go before the end of the year. To understand why we have this request, I want to just give you a very brief comment or history. The facility originally had a 42-foot 10-inch buffer between the building and the west property line right here. Due to the volume of water that was flowing in the region during peak rainfall, the building had to be raised by four feet, and raising the building necessitated expansion of the ADA ramps on the approach to the building, right there. And so the building had to be moved westward. We also wanted to provide a walkway for the cars so the, so the parents and the children weren't having difficulty navigating the parking lot. That's right here. All of those items required, as I said, moving the building westward. In doing this, we took various steps to accommodate this change. We, we raised the wall on the south and west property lines from the six feet that would normally be required to eight feet, so that's right there. This required us to build new walls, completely new block walls there at a significant, significant cost, but it provides an additional buffer to the residential area in excess of what would otherwise be required. I'll just show you. Can you see that, that there?
Yes.
So, thank you very much.
Those microphones in the middle are on, so you--
Oh, okay. If I can stand right there.
Yeah, you can kind of say that.
Thank you very much.
There you go.
Thank you. Okay. We also clustered many of the trees, which is, which I understand is permitted, and it require, but it does require additional trees, and we've shown that in the, in the plans that were, that were approved. What we're seeking is an encroachment into the landscape buffer right here for two play, for the two, two of the play areas, and let me just change and show this, show this here. For the three-to-five-year-olds right up here, this, this here is a poured-in-place rubber pad that would be put into the landscape buffer approximately five feet, again corresponding to the element in which we had to move the building. Note that no structure encroaches into the buffer. For the one-to-two-year-olds down in this, in this section, again, a poured-in-place rubber pad would be put into the landscape buffer, again approximately five feet, and no struc, no structure encroaches. Both of these have merely a grade-level rubber pad, so the kids can play, instead of in what would be a, a heavy rocky area over here, they can play, you know, on a rubber pad without falling down, hurting themselves. For the smaller children, there's also a two-feet, two-foot concrete strip along here for them to ride their tricycles. Maryhill, the operator of the school, tells us that they feel strongly that the need, that they need the additional area to provide a good environment for the children to play. In over 600 schools, the architect for that operator told me today that a play area smaller than the one requested would give the kids a substandard play yard. If the variance could not be granted, Maryhill would have to either install substandard, smaller jungle gym structures, or perhaps they could eliminate the tricycle path for the one-to-two-year-olds. Perhaps we could, particularly along this side, some trees could be, further trees could be installed, five-gallon trees, in order to give the, give the site some additional buffer. But the site, the development does comply in all other respects for, with all the city requirements. We, just finally, I'll just say that we as developers understand the, and we respect the importance of the landscape buffer to the community standards. We never sought an overly intensive use for the site. That's, that's not what we wanted to do. But because of the regional drainage flow and the requirement to raise the site and the need to provide handicaps ramps, the building had to be moved, and we don't want the kids to have a substandard play area if we can avoid that. We would note that, as quoted in the, in the staff report, that exceptions are allowed, this is according to Title 19 dot 18 oh 7 oh L. We would note that exceptions are required, quote, "by reason of exceptional topographic conditions or other extraordinary or exceptional situation or condition of the piece of property where the strict application of any zoning regulation would result in peculiar and exceptional practical, practical difficulties." And we would respectfully ask for you to allow the variance on that basis.
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience who wants to speak for or against this item? Please come forward at this time. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Comments or questions? Vice Chairman Trober?
I certainly share your concern for having a substandard area for the children to play in.
Thank you.
I also share your concern for encroaching on the residential units that are immediately on the other side of the wall. How many students do you intend on having in this Maryhill facility?
Well, the total maximum of the number of students would be, I believe, at 200.
And that would result in a requirement of how many square foot of outside space available to them to play in? There is a state standard, not a city standard.
Yes, there is, and I'm sorry, I'm sorry, sir, I don't know that off the top of my head, but I do know that it has met the, the standard for, for that, because we're pretty far along with this project. So we have enough site area, I mean, if the, if the application--
So you've already started to build it--
Buildings up.
Understanding--
Buildings up.
Understanding that you had to encroach on the setback so that you could achieve the outside's play area, which of course we don't want to have it to be a substandard, do we?
No, we don't.
Okay. All right. Good, we're together on this then. Okay. What is the distance then between the block wall in the rear there and the building itself?
Today, it's 38 feet. It would be 38 feet as, as built, and as I said, the original plan was for 42 feet, 10 inches. Let me-- One of the plans has it here. So this, this area here would be 38 feet.
Thank you.
Any more comments or questions from members of the board?
Yeah, I'm still confused. I'm still confused on this. Were you around when the original zone change was done on this parcel?
You mean me personally?
Yeah. Involved with the, with the original zone change on this?
No, sir.
Okay. There were lots of concessions made with those homeowners to the west, lots of concessions, lots of meetings. Things went on so that you coming in did not encroach upon their lifestyle. And I, and I'm confused on another issue. It sounds like you moved the building such that it didn't meet the original site plan review. Is that what I'm hearing? Did, did we amend the site plan at some point in time to allow that, that west property line building setback to be reduced by six feet?
Yeah, the building itself did move additionally six feet closer, met the residential adjacency setback to the west, and it also met the setbacks required by the zoning code. Buildings do move on the site plans from time to time based upon drainage studies and traffic studies.
Yeah. But somebody, somebody just didn't get creative on the handicap accessible route. So your, your, your quick solution was to move the building, which further encroaches upon those homeowners to the west that were there before you. So I feel that we should stick to the original agreement and have that landscaping there, and if you made the decision to make your tot lot smaller, that's your, that's your problem. That you're impacting those people that were there first, and concessions were made to allow you to be there in the first place. So you're not going to see my support on this thing at all, just because, well, we screwed up, let's, let's just, we'll just go on and, and not worry about everybody else. I don't like the attitude of, of that, you know, and I don't know, did you meet with the homeowners to the west? to the west?
Sir, my understanding-
Well, no, that's a question. Did you meet with the homeowners to the west?
Personally, no, sir, I didn't. It's my, may I address your comments? It's my understanding that all of those homeowners received mailings, and we attempted to contact them, and that all of them were unresponsive. I was not, you're correct, I was not personally involved in the project when this original plan was developed and approved here at the commission, but the gentleman who worked on this at that time, that's what they led me to believe, so if that's incorrect then-
So, that gentleman went door-to-door and knocked on the door, and nobody answered the door at all?
Well, I'd have to ask him, sir, I'm sorry.
Well, I mean, you're representing the item tonight, so we have no other information than what's available for us tonight. And so it sounds like you're saying you made a great attempt to do it, nobody answered the door or answered the phone, and honestly, I don't believe that, so.
Well, the reason why they made an attempt to do that was because there was a question whether we could enter onto the block wall and add height to the original block wall, and that would have been on the adjacent homeowner's property, and we were unable to get, they were unresponsive to that request, and so-
Now, I'm hearing you talked to them about the block wall, but you didn't talk to them about this waiver of condition.
Sir, we attempted to contact them, and none of them, I'm told that none of them responded.
How?
Through phone calls and mailing. But I would say, sir, I-
Honestly, I don't believe you. I mean, that's the God-honest truth, I don't believe that you guys made any attempt, and you're just encroaching upon these folks because somebody in your organization, from the engineer, the architect, or whatever, made a mistake and decided just to move forward and didn't think about it. And we've been trying to protect homeowners for a while, and we're certainly not doing it here.
Mr. Chairman, through you, is there some way that this can be resolved? So, I mean, can this be designed so that it is more palatable?
Well, the building's already there.
If I may, it's the play areas that are the issue.
But, Mr. Chairman and Director Wheeler, one thing that isn't waivable, this commission can't waive, the city council, I don't believe, can waive because of state statute, is there is so many square feet for every student, it has to be outside play area. Your flood argument, your setback argument, you may finish this project, if you don't meet those play area requirements, you won't be licensed on this site. I just want to go, whatever we do here, I think you need to verify that before you push forward here because it will affect the number of students, and if it's, it can't just be sloped rock, and we can call that within the play area, because I'm very sensitive to what beginning schools, lower schools, daycares, and Maryhill is a reputable organization, but that issue can affect your licensing of this facility to operate, and I think that's not something you can come back and say, hey, we missed it, we can't give 35 feet for every child, you won't be certified in that location. So, I just want to make sure that whatever happens at this board, you don't take that as some approval that those codes could be modified or waived, because as I understand, they aren't waivable.
And we understand that those codes are solid. Maryhill has, my architect is, our architect who's worked on the project is here today, and it's my understanding that the project meets the exterior play area requirement in addition to these two areas here where the jungle gyms are. There's also a play area out here for younger children, for infants and younger children, plus this is a sunshade area here, so the play area extends along this whole portion of the west side of the property. So, it's my understanding, you know, that the architects have done all of these things right, that they just couldn't accommodate the size of the jungle gym that Maryhill wanted.
But you've, in essence, compressed that up against these neighbors' fences, so the, to me, the functionality of that may, it may fit, but it may not be functional, it may create a greater burden on those residents, and that's not, I mean, if we're talking about a school, you don't start out by teaching everybody, well, forget the rules, push everything around. I think you went a little fast in trying to get your project and didn't kind of take that deep breath and say, are we overbuilding the site with, based on the representations and conditions that were made with those residences to that west? Because, I mean, I know you're under construction and that's it, but I do agree with Commissioner Dunham on this. There was a lot of give and take when this came through, and now you're moving forward and expecting us just to make the neighbors give, and I'm not so sure that's the best solution here.
If I might interject.
Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Pierreette McCord. I work for Nadel Architects at 7180 South Dean Martin in Las Vegas, 89119. I think the intention of clustering the trees and shifting the playgrounds towards the back wall may have been misconstrued. It's my understanding, from my interpretation of the code with my limited knowledge, that you have the alternative to line the trees, or you have the alternative to cluster the trees. If you clustered the trees, you have to add one additional tree, and then you have to provide a 35-foot clear area, if I understand that correctly. These playgrounds do fit. Well, let me, if you don't mind, I'll grab my notes.
While you're grabbing your notes, yes, those stipulations are allowed, but there was a site plan that was approved, and that's what those folks expected. And now, all of a sudden, you haven't consulted those adjacent residences and decided on your own to change things and then ask for forgiveness afterwards. To me, that's not the way it should be done.
I completely agree with you, and I was not on the project either at the earlier phase, and I personally have not spoken with the residents either. I don't know to what degree they've tried to contact them, but I can assure you, it was never our intention to disregard the residents. If that were the case, I know that they would not have raised the wall two feet in an intention, with the intention of creating a noise buffer. We had also discussed adding some five-gallon trees along this area where there is an 18-inch planter, where we could put some extra trees in there, providing shade for the playground for the children, because it's from west orientation, and then also, you know, a little bit of greenery and buffer for the neighbors as well. So, I do know that they have tried to take that into account. If it's been overlooked, it was most certainly not intentional.
Mr. Chairman, ma'am, I don't want to interrupt it, but are we going to be redesigning this, or is this going to be sent back for you to try to fix some of the issues, or are we going to vote on it? I mean, that's where I'm not really clear. And Commissioner Dunham, you bring up the point that there was an approved site plan, and I've never heard anything about the clustering of trees, or they're usually, it's specified in the site plan, and then I don't think unless the staff concurs, you get a lot of discretion about, gee, let's do this or that, and it sounds like a lot of-
Well, Commissioner, we're not going to redesign it at the site plan tonight, or at the day is tonight.
If I may, it's just on the waiver that you have before you is the, right, the zero feet and 1.5 feet, or 18 inches, as the applicant indicated, instead of eight feet. What happened is these play areas, jungle gyms, moved into the eight-foot landscape buffer, where an eight-foot landscape buffer is supposed to be there. That's the issue.
You've asked several questions tonight that we most certainly don't want to disregard. Would it be acceptable to the committee for us to try to get answers for those questions for you and request a continuance for this matter?
It would probably be more to your advantage, at least it would be able to answer our questions and maybe come back with a compelling answer that may convince us to move forward.
And we would definitely like to provide that for you.
Yes.
We certainly don't want to give you the impression that we're trying to disregard the-
I certainly will not support this item unless if all of those neighbors are contacted behind you that, you know, that thought one thing was happening and something else was going on, so I think you have a lot of work to do to get my vote.
Okay.
Ma'am, how's August 20th?
August 20th is fine. May we also request to set up an appointment with the commissioner for this particular neighborhood?
Which would be Mr. Dunham?
That would be great if you wouldn't mind granting us an appointment so that we can sit down with you in person and very specifically address your concerns, so that when we come back on August 20th-
Well, I think that's what the staffs-
The staffs would probably be where you want to start, and then you want to meet with Commissioner Dunham.
We can do that.
I think he likes meeting out at the site, so you may want to, in the heat.
If I could also, a concern of mine that probably would need to be looked at, and that is the shade shelter over the play equipment appears to be encroaching on those rear homes also. You know, there's a little rendering there that just shows that it's out of the sightline, but I-
Here, sir. I don't know if you can see it there, but this, if you can see the dotted line there, that's the eight-foot buffer.
Yes, yes, okay.
Hopefully, we've got it.
And if you go on down to that same bottom of that page, you see a little, there you go, where your head's blocking the view.
I'm sorry.
That part right there where it shows the little shade shelter going over the children's play equipment, the height of that structure, when it's really and truly drawn to scale rather than just a rendering to give us an idea, I think you'll find that that is going to be right in those people's backyard, because those backyards are fairly shallow in and of themselves.
Well, I certainly don't want the commission to think that we're, you know, that we're moving, that we want to do anything other than move correctly and address everyone's concerns, so give us a chance to do that, and we'll come back the next time and talk again to staff and attempt to reach the neighbors and research some of those matters more thoroughly.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Dunham may hold this item until the August 28 Planning Commission meeting. Could we have a motion from you?
Sure, move to hold for 30 days.
Motion on the floor to hold item 42 till the August 28 Planning Commission meeting. Please cast your vote.
Thank you, Commissioner.
And that has passed. Thank you, you're very welcome. Items 43 through 45 are related items.
46.
Oh, 46. That's correct, sorry. Item 46, SUP 28467, applicant owner Amax Enterprises LLC for a proposed beer/wine/cooler off-sale establishment within a proposed general retail store with a waiver to allow a distance separation of 370 feet for protected use where 400 feet is required at 540 Northeastern Avenue, Suite 145. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, staff would like to note at the time of application that this site was under construction and the business addressing was not finalized. The notice that was provided had the correct parcel number, however, the address was for a general location. The more specific address is, should be noted as 546 Northeastern, Suite 145, which is now the physical address of the location. In regards to the special use permit, staff is unable to support the waiver requested and recommends denial.
Thank you. Applicant?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Stephanie Allen, 3800 Howard Hughes Parkway, here on behalf of the applicant. I'll be brief. If I could just direct your attention to the overhead. This site is located on northeastern, it's between Bonanza Road to the north and US 95 would be right south of where this map ends. As you can see, this is a pretty narrow site, but there's an existing retail shopping center that's already built on the site. What we're here before today, before you today is for a use permit for a beer/wine/cooler off-sale establishment on the site, essentially a convenience store. There's a requirement that we have a 400-foot separation from any churches in the area, and the staff report exhibit, I think, shows this best. This black line is the 400-foot radius that's required from the site to be separated from any places of worship. As you can see, this yellow site is an existing church across Eastern Avenue. We clip the radius right there on the corner of the church and have a distant separation of approximately 360 feet where 400 feet is required. The code does allow us to file for the waiver because there is a 100-foot right-of-way separating our site from the church, so we think that that's a sufficient buffer between uses, and there won't be an adverse impact to the church as a result of this type of use on the property. In addition to that, there have been two previous approvals on this site that were never approved, or never opened as businesses for a supper club as well as for a grocery store with alcohol sales, both of which were approved by the city and are similar-type uses to this, considering the distance of the church. So, with that said, we'd ask that you follow that same rationale and approve our application for use permit.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anybody in the audience who wants to speak for or against this item, please come forward. Mr. Farlow?
Yes, thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North High Street. I would rather see the supper club or canteen, or whatever they want to call it, with a sit-down bar service rather than a takeout. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no one else, we'll close the public hearing. Comments or questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman, if there's no discussion, any discussion?
Mr. Evans?
I think that, I'm familiar with the area, and again, to disclose, I met with Ms. Allen the other day in my office, and she substantially indicated the same things as here on the record this evening, and I think they make a compelling argument. I don't believe there's any opposition to this, but I think it's the spirit of the code, you're a few feet shy, and there's the major arterial of eastern, and for those reasons, I think they've met their burden, and my motion would be to allow the SUP 28467, and my motion would be for approval.
Motion on the floor for approval of item 46. Please cast your votes. And that motion has passed.
That goes forward to council on August 20th.
Okay, thank you. Have a good night.
Good. Item 47, Director's Business. Item 47, TXT 28661, applicant owner City of Las Vegas, discussion of possible action to amend Title 18.20 to revise the public notice requirements for vacation applications that are forwarded to the city council. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, this text amendment will bring Title 18 noticing for vacations more in compliance with Title 19 and with NRS requirements. In addition to that, it will also allow for certain vacations, those being easements and government patent reservations to be final action by the Planning Commission. Vacations of right-of-ways will still be forwarded with a recommendation on the city council. Staff recommends approval of this item.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anybody in the audience who wants to speak for or against item 47, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. If there's no comments or commissions, we'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move for approvals.
Motion on the floor for approval of item 47. Please cast your votes. And that motion has passed.
And that goes forward to council in ordinance form.
Our last and final item is citizens' participation. Item number 48, citizens' participation. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. No subject may be acted upon by the Planning Commission unless that subject is on the agenda and is scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium and give your name for the record. The amount of discussion on any single subject, as well as the amount of time any single speaker is allowed, may be limited. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Meeting is adjourned.